And we're live on Facebook. And they are live.
All right. Well, everyone, welcome to the February seventh, two thousand and twenty four regular meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. We are here at the Learning Commons in the Cohasset Middle and High School. We have chairs for people and we are also virtual with Zoom and Facebook. Zoom, you can chat and ask questions. Facebook, you can't. You can just watch how the wonderful proceedings. With that, I will do our roll call, make sure we've got our committee here. So I'll start with Mr. Kearney.
Present.
Ms. Leskey?
Present.
Mr. Carr?
Present.
Ms. McCollum?
Present.
And Mr. Dial? Present. We are all accounted for in here, so we can open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we have a big agenda tonight with lots of interesting stuff, including financial stuff with our star Susan Owen, who will be walking us through some of that. So we're just going to get right into it. First item of the agenda is our open public comment. This is the item of the agenda for any members of the public who want to talk about something that is not on the agenda. You're welcome to talk about something that is not. Let us know that you have something that you wouldn't like to say on something that's on the agenda, but we will reserve talking about that until the agenda item. So with that, I will open it up to public forum. Anyone in person? Yes, please come on up and state your name and address for the record.
My hero.
Hey, Ronnie, come sit here.
Oh, great, thank you. Taking your seat. You're right. So, good evening. I'm Ronnie Goodwin. I live over on Sawyer Street, next door to Deer Hill School. And what I'm here tonight to do is just to let you know that we, we understand that there's a plan in place to put the school buses up in front of Deer Hill School. And we respectfully disagree with that plan based on a bunch of different things. And we don't want to, we're not second guessing the school committee. I'm sure you guys, I know you have a lot on your plate right now. And what I've heard, some circles, they say, well, it's not, it hasn't been decided. However, there's flags in the wetlands by my house and there's, there's a set of plans. And I've spoken to Glenn Pratt, who was, I think he found the, he prepared the scope of what they're doing. So I answer any questions? Is anybody?
Mr. Goodman, just for the record, if people aren't here to see it, Mr. Goodman did hand out a notice here. Is there any point on here that you want to make for the public record?
Well, well, there's four points, if I could. The one primary concern is the traffic congestion. Sawyer Street has the library, the music circus, Osgood, Deer Hill, rec department. And, you know, so it's, and I know that's not your part of your purg, but every morning now, when the people drop their kids off at Osgood, there's a line of cars right down to Sawyer Street and sometimes onto Sawyer Street. So we think that, or I think that you put eleven buses into that mix, it's just going to exacerbate that situation. And then the noise and the air pollution. It's so it's a, it's a plan for eleven big buses. And if you want to see what it looks like now, you could go by three A, like at six in the morning, and you'll see eleven buses there with their engines running. And so it's a, it's a commercial bus operation in a residential neighborhood. So the diesel fumes, there's studies that say that could affect the children, this congestion. So kids are going to be going in and out of Deer Hill and the buses will be coming and going. And then this, the third item we're concerned about is the financial burden. I know that, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly why you want to change what you're doing now. I have some ideas about it, but I don't, I don't know. And I, I tend to think that the, with the, excuse me, I missed a few Toastmasters classes.
Where the buses are, you're saying where they are now, right? Correct? On three A?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a maintenance building on the DPW. There's that, part of the reason that whole thing was built was to house the buses up there. They were there for fifteen, twenty years. That's where the buses get their fuel. That's where, so they're in and out of there all the time anyhow. And also that's where the police fuel up their vehicles. So this police activity, and it's not in a residential neighborhood. It's, it's up back in the woods. So that, I mean, if I was in charge, I would say, let's go back to where we were. And so, but the, but the financial burden of building this facility, it's not just the cost of building it. You're going to, you're going to adopt the maintenance of it. So, so right now, you don't maintain the property you, you're renting up at three A. You know, he's doing the plowing and the, and that, and making sure that it's, the pavement is in good shape and all that. So, but I, but I understand that a lot of people in town say, why is the town paying some, a private person rent to put our school buses on? And that doesn't make sense. But, but if you figure out how much this is going to cost, and we have no idea what it's going to cost, but we know it's going to be considerable because it has a twenty by twenty building on it. It has a pretty extensive drainage system and all that's going to have to be maintained. So even, so if you figured out like what you're paying now, you'd have to get, it would take thirty, forty years before you even break even. And then at that point, you'd, you'd have to still, you'd have still other costs that would kick in to maintain it and keep it up. And the fourth one is why my neighbors and I are very interested in this is it's going to impact our, our neighborhood with, where you put in a facility right next to, these people hear this, right next to their house. And so it's going to negatively impact our property values, you know, typical nimby's. We don't want it in our backyard. But my wife Mary was on the committee to build the Osgood School. We support you guys and what you do. And when this is in no way saying, oh, you guys don't know what you're doing. It's just, I think you need to revisit the issue and come up with a, a plan that would be more appropriate.
Well, thank you, Mr. Goodman.
Oh, thank you.
Very much appreciate it. Very nicely delivered, but just like the Toastmasters.
Alumni of this building.
Appreciate it.
There we go. But thank you for your time. If anyone has any questions or they want to get in touch with me, go ahead. But can I, can I ask you one question? The, on the, in your minutes, you have the budget items that you budget things for. And at one point, there was a line item for two hundred thousand for this, this.
Park lot.
Yeah.
Propose.
Yeah. But I don't, it was only on there like one time and then it disappeared. So I don't know, is that the money you're spending to do the plans and the engineering or is that something else?
So, and I'm not going, because this is not a formal agenda, I'm not going to open it up to deliberations, but I do want to respond to some of your concerns at the initial stage. At this point, there is no plan for the buses. There's no plan for a parking lot, there's no plan for a depot. So two hundred thousand dollars that you saw on the preliminary capital request has come off because we know we're not ready. We're not ready to make a decision. We're looking at options. The, the expansion of the Deer Hill parking lot, and I think it's, no one has considered building a bus depot. What we have considered doing is extending that parking lot a bit front forward to allow parking spaces for our buses in the, in the yard. Now, in order for that to work, we have to do some investigation. Talk to the CPC, not CPC, the Conservation, the Conservation Committee. And pursuant to their recommendation, we are doing a preliminary investigation on where the wetlands are. Because first question of anything is, is this even a possibility? And the answer is, we don't know yet. That's what those flags are about. The flags are not a plan, they're not architecture, they're not, they're not a design. We're looking at what our options are. We are looking at that option because we are, as you noted, paying considerable amount of money to a private individual for parking our buses. This is a financial decision in my mind. If it's a, if, if, as you described it, if it, we have to invest so much that it's a thirty year payback, not worth it. Then, then we'll continue this or we'll look for other options. So this is one available option. We understood the DPW has no longer can accommodate our buses in their facility, which is why we're trying to find a new home while we're leasing space instead of using the DPW. So it's a, it's a thorny issue for us. We have buses, they need to find a place to park. The rest is sure, we're nowhere near a decision on where, what we're going to do with them. Right now, we have a place that they can live. It's suboptimal in my view, but it makes it a lower priority for us. We're not trying to find a superintendent and some of the other things that our schools are facing. So it is an item that we want to solve at some point. It's not on our capital budget request for this year, so you can rest assured it's not going to happen in the, the coming year. And to the extent that we do pick that back up, which I expect that we would at some point, we're going to be using it through the normal process. We'll have multiple meetings to deliberate and discuss and to consider responding to your points, which I very much appreciate. So I hope that's, I hope that's helpful.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your time. I only, well, my concern is that there are set of plans and it's all laid out for the buses to be there. So it's, so even if it's just.
Yeah, I would say those plans are illustrative only. Those are not planned, we're nowhere near getting a shovel out to do it.
Right, right.
I can assure you of that.
Okay.
But it's the, the plans are a concept. I think what we've seen here in the committee is basically a Google Maps picture of an overlap. And that's, that's, that's as far as we've gotten. That, that's not enough for what we have.
We.
Mr. Pratt, I believe, had a more detailed set of plans somewhere.
We met with the engineers and walked through it. He said, this is where we're going to put the buses. This is where we're going to put the building and this is where we're going to put this. And I said, this is where you're going to do it? And who's paying for it? What's, and he said, well, you have to talk to Mr. Pratt. So I talked to Glenn and he said, he, well, I don't want to say what he said, but.
That's fair.
But anyhow.
May have overstepped the actual plans. We're, we're not, we've not engaged an engineer for putting the buses anywhere. So I make a, I guess, does anyone have the other color on that?
I do, I do. So in order, I mean, step one is we have to check out the wetlands. So the Conservation Commission, but just for a storm, a storm water permit, just to, to show that we're not going to be within, you know, we're going to be within the distance that we need to be to even begin to think about it. But in order to do that, we have to submit a set of plans, which is probably what you've seen. So this plant, it has nothing to do with a bus lot. It strictly has to do with right now, the only thing we're trying to do is find out if it's, if it's usable because of the wetlands. So we can't do anything until we get that, that conservation permit for the water, water drainage or I don't know what, can you know what it's called?
Stormwater.
Stormwater. So basically the stormwater design, we have to put that forward first. And, you know, we've talked about it, we can, we can get that permit and then it can sit for three years.
Yes, well, I can, our concern is that, that it's moving down and that if the Conservation Commission says, yeah, you can do it, it's going to just go to the next phase. And it's never going to be, let's figure out, is this the best place?
But I, it's not going to happen. We won't slip by you.
No.
We wouldn't do that.
That is the job of this committee.
We wouldn't do it. It wouldn't just happen, you wouldn't wake up and.
Yeah.
He's trouble. He's absolutely trouble.
Yeah, no, no worries. He makes some good.
Your concern is there.
Mr. Goodman, I appreciate it. Based, based on what's happening with this left in downtown, maybe you could consider parking in behind.
You might be just.
Wow, that's not a bad idea.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Any other public comment?
Thank you.
And there's no comments online.
No comments online. Any other comments from the attendees?
No.
Russell?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And actually just shout out, thank you for coming in person. That's always great to see a lot of human beings involved. All of you online, we like people coming in person. So that will close off public comment and we'll move on to our invited guests. We'll start with our Superintendent Advisory Council Liaison, Nathan Askjar.
Askier.
Askier.
It's a tough one.
It is, it's got a J in it that sounds like a Y.
It's a silent J, that's the best way I, big way I have to explain it to people.
There we go. Well, the floor is yours.
Yeah, so just a little bit about student life, obviously the winter sports that we have going on, arts update, and then what we're actually working on for the Students Council, Superintendent Advisory Council. And I'll start with the student life. You guys may not know or may know that we just ended our first semester. So for seniors, very downhill till summer, for us slightly downhill. I'm a junior. So successful first semester, this Friday, February ninth, we have a credit for life fair, which is the seniors will be participating in. And they'll go in in the gym, they'll dress up nicely. And there's a lot of parent volunteers from this town who have career paths that might be interesting to these future students. So it's aimed towards helping them once they get out of class at high school, out of college, to choose a career path. There's a trivia night for the all grades nine through twelve in the high school Thursday, February fifteenth. And I believe I've been told that the proceeds are going to fund the seniors prom. There's a semi-formal dance for the high school on Friday, March first. So that's what's going on in the school life right now. As far as sports, we have hockey, basketball for boys and girls, gymnastics, swimming, wrestling and skiing. We have a ski team. The boys hockey team, it's a young team, they have a new goalie, they're hoping to make playoffs. And I've talked to a few of my friends on the team, they think they can make, they're going to make the playoffs. So I'll be excited to tune into some of those games, they're fun to go to. Boys basketball, also I have a few buddies on the team. I know they're dealing with a bunch of injuries. It's a very young team. I can't, it's like the first time, and I can't even remember when, they haven't had a single senior on the team, so very young team. So they'll definitely be good next year, but similarly, they'll probably make the playoffs. They had an overtime win against Mashpee in Cohasset last Friday, which was awesome to go to. And there's been a lot of the younger kids going to the games too. So like first, second grade, third grade, and they've been super loud, it's been awesome. I don't know if any of you guys have ever made it out to any of the games, but they've been really funny. Girls' basketball have a record of eight and six and they're tenth in the power rankings right now. And Sarah Chanette just broke the school record for career points, so that's something awesome. Always good to see. The gymnastics team, which is combined with Norwell, so classed in Norwell, they just had a season high record of one hundred thirty point six as a score in a meet against Somerset Berkeley, and they had their senior night last Friday, so under the five seniors on their team. The league meet is Saturday and that'll be the last of their season, so that'll conclude their season. The swim team, boys and girls, had a strong season. The boys won the league title and the girls took third. A couple of the swimmers are still training for the sectionals and maybe even states, which is exciting as well. Similar for wrestling, they have a couple of kids that are going to be hoping to go to the state tournament and will be competing at sectionals. I think it's this Friday. I was talking to one of my buddies today about it, but they started the season with a two and six record and have ended with a record of fifteen and ten. So it's a really good comeback and everyone's pretty fired up about it. For arts, as far as arts go, the school band concert, all school band concerts, so middle school, elementary school, high school, will be the twenty first of March at the high school. So if you guys can make it or free that time, I'm in the bands, I've always been, my brothers are in the band, so there's a lot of good music. It's always a good time and she, Ms. Murray already tries to get everyone out pretty quickly too, so it shouldn't take up too much time. For Superintendent's Council, we, as you guys might know, we've had a compass plan for the past few years and that's finally, we've completed that and it's come to an end. So what we're working on this year is drafting a new plan, strategic plan for the upcoming years. As always, using this student voice, which is partially my job and some of the other people, students that are involved in the council. Also recently, we've had a new chef. I don't know if you guys have heard much about it, but maybe you haven't heard coming from a student and someone like me who's always an avid food eater. I, I think he's great. Some of the meals he's made have been awesome and it's actually, I've never seen kids so excited to get cafeteria food in my life. So it's, it's really good, I can, I can tell you that. And for Student Council, I'm a member of Student Council, we'll be having a ping pong tournament soon in utility. It'll be taking court, taking place over the course of five days for people interested. It's an annual thing and there's always a good turnout across all grades, boys and girls. It's a fun thing to do. And it's not like if you want to take part in it, you can. If you want to use the time and get caught up in classes, you can too. It's a very flexible thing, but it's fun to get us through these kind of cold months in the winter to get something to look forward to. That covers pretty much it, but if you guys have questions too, I can help answer.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Kearney, anything we can?
Nate, great job. Hockey, where's that, it's, it's in Weymouth, right?
Yeah, it's in Weymouth, they have a game tonight, actually.
Oh, do they? Because I got to be honest, I played hockey in high school and I can't believe I've never been to a hockey.
I know, I've been meaning to get to one this season. I've been super busy with sports in school, but I'm telling them, I hope they make the playoffs so I can go catch a game, see my buddies play, see everyone play. I think they're in Rockland tonight against Rockland. I've been told that.
I'm definitely going to take my kids to it.
Yeah, they're fun games.
I owe it to Cohasset Hockey. It's great, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Ms. Leskey?
No questions, thank you. And we got to chat a little bit before the meeting started, so.
Yeah, and if you have anything else about that too, because I'm, I'm always around the way.
I, I just love hearing this, this student voice of sort of describing how things are going and gosh, it makes me wish I were in high school.
Yeah, everything's going pretty good.
Maybe not waiting for college letters, but I wish I was.
Mr. Carr?
So I'm sure these guys will talk about the food in a second, but we love that there's improvement to the food around here. I literally want to go get shirts made that says, I can't see, I believe kids stand in line for cafeteria food.
I'd maybe get a shirt.
We're, we're really excited about it and I'm glad that it's getting noticed. And, but we're always open to suggestions on that stuff. These two guys have worked very hard on improving food around here, especially.
Team.
But it's very important to us and, you know, my daughter hasn't come home complaining about food. That's great.
Yeah.
So, yeah, very happy to hear that. But again, if there's stuff that you ever need or want or whatever, we're very open to you. So always feel free to throw right in there and we just, we appreciate you guys coming and telling us what's going on in the school.
Definitely.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Nathan, is it orange chicken and rice? Is that what everyone was talking about?
Yeah, that was the old staple that everyone liked. I like a lot of the specials that the chef makes every day. I mean, they're, they're fantastic, honestly. It's like something my parents would make for dinner and they're good cooks as well, so it's, it's really good.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. I think the, to amp it up to the next level, we're going to have to take some of your tomatoes and serve those.
Absolutely.
Mr. McCollum?
Just, Nate, thanks as always. Anything, any, any areas for improvement or any concerns that you've seen? You talked about sort of updates and good things, just wondering if, and, you know, no is a perfectly acceptable response, just sort of one of the main reasons we, we have student voice in the committee is to hear, you know, the negative things or the, or the constructive criticism, maybe is a better way to put it. Anything you can think of?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest with you, I, in my, one of the meetings I was at presenting earlier in the year, I said I'd have to wait for the year to go on so I could come up with something better. But when I was writing down notes for this, there wasn't anything glaring that came to mind. I think I could speak for my friends and my, my, I have younger brothers too, so it's a pretty good population poll. I don't think there's a lot that's could be improved on, nothing big. I think everything's going pretty smoothly so far, so.
Well, good to hear it. Thank you. Positive feedback.
Yes, and thank you. I might, I just one question. If you could list five things that you'd like Principal Scott to improve? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Thank you very much for the, for the update. Very much appreciate your willingness to come to these meetings and we love the transparency and the, and the student life.
Yeah, I'd say something too, if I thought, because I know I had asked two years ago, it might have been now, when I, I'd be in the weight room and I know I had asked and said that all this stuff was super rusty and old and it's obviously still functional, but it's great to see like that action is taking place. So I, if there's something that I saw, I'd say.
I'd mention. And another kudos.
That man, your thing right there.
Teams, all of us.
Great.
And, and student voice, that, that, that went a long way to stand up and say that because we did listen. You made your point. We went into action, talked to Sullivan too, and the whole staff.
Yeah, hopefully too, it'll contribute to some pretty special sporting moments.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we were talking earlier about how, you know, this is the older kids teaching the younger kids. And that, that's really what it is. It's, it's, it's generations that will, will see the value there.
Sure. I think COVID was tough with that too. That was one that Ted, that gap that I was talking about, about kids in the school weight room. But like I said, having the older kids back and they're really good, there's a good type of energy about it, super positive, constructive, so.
Nate, do the, do the high schools seem to like the new furniture we put out, like the CBA in the lobby area, people using that?
In English class today, we are using the upper lobby furniture by the window, by the vending machines. It's super good. Some of the teachers utilize it now, those high tables, I see people working out all the time. The lower lobby, before the bell rings, when everyone gets to school early, people congregate there. I, I sit down on those sofas every day, so I, I'm a fan. I think a lot of people use them.
That's great. They're like moving them around to just.
Yeah, no, it's definitely good.
I mean, there's outlets and everything is working. It's good, the place is there. Good. Okay, good, good to hear.
I have one more thing. So one of the things the students probably don't pay attention, you all did very well in the MCAS score as we.
My teacher.
Around here, so congratulations to all of you for what you're doing. And we, it does not go unnoticed around here. So it's a real tribute to how hard people are working. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much. Good you, you're coming. And with that, we'll close that out and we'll move on to a Mr. Principal Scott double header.
That's right.
So first, we're going to start with our spotlight on learning, a, for the Cohasset High School, a Shot for Life Courage Cup.
Yeah, so I'm going to keep Nathan here and he'll be my spokesperson on this too. I wanted to, you know, Nate just outlined all of the great stuff that's happening within the walls of the building. There's a lot of great stuff that happens outside the walls as well. And one of the pillars of our vision of graduate is scholarship serving the greater good, scholarship in the broadest sense. So what are you good at? What are you passionate about? And how can you use that to make a difference? And one of the organizations that we partnered with is called the Shot for Life. We'll give you just a kind of a brief history of where that came from, because I was actually involved in it, so I had a little bit of a bias towards it. It was one of, if not the most impressive student project that I was ever part, happened prior to Cohasset, that school called Catholic World in West Roxbury. I was the assistant principal there and we had a senior, his name was Mike Slimina. And Mike was the manager of the basketball team. He had an ankle injury, so he couldn't ever play, but he was passionate about the sport. He was a massive gym rat, same as Nathan. Every time he pulled up, he, you know, wanted the keys to the gym, wanted the, you know, the rebounding machines thrown out there. And he was just a great student leader and, and when you're in positions of administration, you have a lot of students who come forward and have these great ideas. And ninety-eight percent of them are great ideas that don't go anywhere. Because there's not a lot of follow through and that's just the age and it's the learning process and it's part of it. So he came to me and he said, I, I, he says, my mother has brain cancer and I just found out, it was just in his room. He says, and I want to do something to help and I'd like to shoot baskets for twenty-four hours and set a record for the most baskets made. I said, wow, I said, all right, I said, great. So what do you need from me? Well, you need the gym overnight and need a trainer. I said, great, you do all the PR, tell me what the numbers are. And he says, no, no, it's, it's going to be great. The mayor's going to come, it'll, it'll be phenomenal. I said, great, make it happen. And he did. And ESPN Boston wrote an article a couple of weeks before it happened. Mayor Manino came, the Boston police came, firefighters came, and he shot for twenty-four hours with a packed gym. Teachers stayed overnight, you know, we slept in offices, people took shifts rebounding for them, they took shifts, you know, getting water and getting them training. And he did it. And it was one of the most emotional things that I've seen and, and such a great indicator of how much influence students can have when they follow through with it. He ended up taking that when he graduated and turned it into a five oh one C three. They've raised over a million dollars for brain cancer research. He was, he's been recognized by Mass General Hospital as part of the one hundred, which is the one hundred most contributing people to cancer research and funding. He's since branched out from basketball into soccer, lacrosse, baseball, softball, and he's all over the world. Um, he's since branched out from basketball into soccer and lacrosse, uh, baseball, softball, and he's all over New England now. And it's just a great um, thing to see. His mother is fine. Uh, cancer. Is is no more from what I can tell. Um, and he's really just doing a great job. So a few years ago, he came in and he said, I'd love to get Cohasset involved. And I said, you know, fantastic, what can you do? And a lot of kids, and Nathan's one of them, have been participating in these kind of ancillary fundraising activities that he's put on, so. With that background, I'm gonna turn it over to Nathan and he can tell you what his role was and what they did, um.
Yeah, so unlike Mr. Scott, I'm probably a little more unbiased to it since I've been a part of it for a shorter period of time, but I still think it's awesome. Um, the way they view sports too, with student athletes is really smart. I talked to my parents about it too. It's just really, really smart what they do because. They, someone like me, I play soccer. I played soccer almost my whole life. And I happen to be pretty solid at it, so they go and identify student athletes who are not only like standouts at their sport that they do. But good people in the community, someone that um, students look to, other people look to. And they choose these kids to represent the cause, the program. Like you see, I have a hoodie here that I wore that they gave, super nice hoodie. But they want these kids to go back and take their communities, this image as program. Um, and I can speak for the soccer portion of it. The boys and girls who are selected to compete in the All-Star Game at Union Point. We raised ninety thousand dollars between the two of us, the boys and girls, the two games. Um, and that's probably like eighty kids. So everyone's raising almost over a thousand dollars, which is, it was really awesome. And this, these are kids from all over the state. Up by New Hampshire, up Western Mass, kids I've played with, kids I know. So it was, it was a pretty cool experience. Um, and a lot of the newspapers were there, some former cancer patients were there. And like Principal Scott said, they work with Mass General Hospital, um. To do research for this uh, treatment for brain cancer. It's an immunotherapy type of immunotherapy. Um. But a hundred percent of, or a lot of the money, almost a hundred percent, I'm not entirely sure, goes to Mass General Hospital. Um. And I was able through NHS to use this as my service project to kind of get the community behind it, uh, the cohesive soccer behind it, the school behind it. And the teachers, family, friends, obviously. We have, um, I use, I test Barrett and I, she was a girl who. Was chosen from Cohasset, great soccer player. She's going to Maryland. Uh, we organized a two V two tournament for the high school kids. And I was able to work with my soccer coach from the high school, Coach Willis and Mr. Rotandi, the athletic director, to get. Soccer balls, cones, pug nets. He was able to turn the lights on for us. Um, and we were able to run the soccer tournament. We got the boys and girls out there from all grades in the high school. It was just a really fun event. Um, teams paid a registration fee that went straight to the cause. Uh, Mike Salonia and the other guys that worked for Shot for Life were kind enough to come out to the event and watch and help run it. Um, and they provided hoodies that I could give to kids who won it as a prize and an incentive. So it was really a nice wholesome uh, tournament and it was really fun at this time in the winter, kind of the off season. To get some kids who might not have been playing soccer to get them back out there again. Um, and it was, it was a really good time. And I was really thankful to be selected for it.
Not just an extraordinary example, I mean, this is what it's about. You know, it's about kids finding the talent and, you know, a few more talented than. Uh, than Nathan at soccer, among many other things. And to be able to use that for the greater good and unite people in that way, you know. Spend an afternoon in the in the cold weather for a good cause is really impressive and uh.
It's great, thank you, Nathan.
And I was happy to use NHS as well as my service project and use soccer is obviously something that I'm really passionate about. To help people. For me, it's always like, again, it's a game, it's a sport, but it's also like. Way to make friends and meet people. And if you can use it to help people, it's even better. So that was really important to me and that's why I love what I do, so. It was really good. That's why having students who are athletes helps support this program. So awesome.
So great, great job.
And any questions too, I can answer.
Just open forum, anyone questions for Mr. Scott on Shot for Life?
I just have a comment. This is fantastic. Um, one of my best friends passed away from brain cancer. To see him when he went through and there 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 still was some development to help him live longer. And to see you guys do this, not only is it's it's awesome to see our kids give back. It's just also too, is it, any anytime I've ever done fundraising, it's a lot of fun. I mean, anytime you're raising money, everybody's always in a good mood. A lot better than political stuff. Like, I don't wanna go into any of those. But any, you you will find that anytime of like golf tournaments or anything to do with charities giving back, it's just a, just a wonderful part of being part of that. And and thank you to all the donors that that stepped up and their financial, I'm sure it's helped.
Yeah, it was great. I was, I was happy to raise a lot of money in that community. And the doctor they work with at Mass General Hospital, Mike Salonia, his metaphor to me was he's the Michael Jordan doctor. So he's supposed to be really good and the treatment they use has been really effective so far. So it's awesome.
Community comments, questions?
I feel like, one, this is an exceptional story and an exceptional example. But I think even more important is being in a district that sort of gives students a vision outside of their own sphere. Um, and encourages them to take what they've been given in terms of their education and their support that they've had. And to do something good for others. Um, sort of that's the whole point of schools and education is to better the world in which we live. And something I guess is is absolutely the perfect example of that, but the fact that we also are in a district. That encourages that and supports that. I mean, that's, I mean, as a parent, as an educator, all I want for kids. Is to go out and do something great, do something that makes them feel good, but also makes others feel good. So, I mean, this is just wonderful all around.
Thank you very much. Again, that wonderful, wonderful project, wonderful contribution to the community. Very much appreciate, Mr. Scott. These things and and your participation in making them happen. So this is uh, what makes, one of the many things that makes our district special. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. As always, always eloquent, always has good voice and really contributes a lot, so thank you so much.
Thank you for having, thank you for having us.
Um, so we'll move on to the second, um, Mr. Brian Scott event. As a, as a introduction, we we do normally do the program of studies for the uh, the middle high school and the. The middle school and the high school together. Uh, but given that uh, Mr. Scott is here, present, uh, and the changes, that's. Minor, uh, I thought it made sense for us to just do it all at once. But uh, so this is an item that we will be voting on, but I do encourage the committee that these are motions that you make. Uh, so if we're not ready and we wanna have a bit more time, we certainly can do that. But um, Mr. Scott, I'll turn it over to you. Great?
Um, so not a lot of changes to the program of studies. Um, we do have three new course offerings, which is probably the most substantial. Um, potential change depending on course request and enrollment. Two in wellness, uh, one is. Uh, a sports officiating class. So that's in response to kind of a national shortage of referees. The MIAA and the NFHS, which is the National Federation of High Schools, has put together a curriculum to teach kids to become referees. The MIAA is sponsoring part of the class to do this. Um, it's about. It's every student who'd be certified in basketball and soccer, if they took the course and if they wanted to do something. As an independent study outside of that, um, we can find other sports as well. So that um, that would be an offering under the wellness department. It wouldn't necess, it would count towards the total credits. It wouldn't necessarily replace. The need for students to take PE or wellness. The second is an advanced fitness training course. So these would be. For really specific student uh, personal interest. So students who wanted sports specific training, students who wanted. Uh, who had personal fitness goals, students who wanted to, um, you know, train for five K. In lieu of a traditional PE class where you might rotate through a circuit of different activities, this would be more targeted to specifically, you know, those students' interests. Absolutely utilizing the weight room and some of the new technology we'll add down there. Um, and again, it'll be, they're both quarter classes. This would actually take the place of PE, uh, cause it is physical. And it it'll compete with a lot of other courses, so we'll see what student interest is and then we'll try to run it. And and go from there. Uh, so those are two courses in wellness. The third course that we have is of course in neuroscience. Uh, Dr. Duncan, who's done a wonderful job with our marine science and our biology classes. Um, and partnering with CSCR, is a neuroscientist by doctorate degree. So she um. She proposed a course on neuroscience. The CEF gave it, gave us some seed money to fund some of the materials for that. I think it's gonna be wildly popular. The kids are are looking for academic collectives. Um. So this would be another quarter, uh, academic collective in the sciences department, uh, that would run up against things like ecology or. Biodiversity and genetics and stuff like that. So those are the courses. The only other two things, one is on here and one is not, cause it was kind of a recent change. One is just the language clarification. Um, our requirement said you have to have four, twenty credits or four courses in US history. And what we found was that some students would take AP US history and AP Euro, which is the equivalent of four courses, but they only have two courses. And you know, we're not gonna penalize somebody for picking the highest level of course, so we just made that language clarification. The other comes out of some work we did. Uh, realigning some of the math curriculum. And so we're just gonna tweak the content or the the. Scoping sequence a little bit in the title of the formerly trigonometry courses to be advanced algebra with trig. So it's almost like an algebra three, uh, with trig.
And I think the the physical education classes in particular, well, the first one's great because it's related to, um. Real life experience, right? For when we're looking at making, having students be referees. The second one is a, is a response so to some of the student voice around them looking, particularly out of the wellness classes. About things that they're looking that would be different than just regular, traditional, what you would think of.
Yeah, and there are a lot of schools that go back to years and years that give people, um, PE credits for participating in athletics.
Yeah.
We don't. This, I think, is a really smart way to do both.
Right, yeah. I think it's, um, I guess, I just think it's in response to what they need and of course, the neuroscience, so excited about that.
Mr. Scott, the um, the the math, the change you outlined, not, it was not yet reflected in the, in the minimum of the materials. Is it reflected in the program of study presented to the committee?
It will be. Yeah, it's, it, it was not in draft when I had to send it to, um, when we set it back up.
So can you, can you describe it in a little bit more detail? Because the committee's gonna vote on that. I feel like we need to know a little bit more about.
Sure. So traditionally, students would take, you know, algebra one, geometry, algebra two, trig, precalculus in that kind of sequence. And what, what we've done in kind of looking at our math sequence across the the four grades and going into. Even the seventh and eighth grades coming up, is that we really wanna elongate a little bit of what we do in algebra. The trig can be a little bit too. Complex in the sense that it is, um, abstract. Uh, so trig and precalculus for sophomores are a little bit more abstract and sometimes the developmental, um. Maturity, academic maturity of the kids can handle. Folding in more algebra, which is essentially the the fundamentals of trig, and then hitting on the trig topics. Get a little bit of a different time in the curriculum, set us up better to then move into precalculus and set the kids up better. Uh, to go into higher levels of math. So it's really just a little bit of a shift in what we're doing, elongating algebra two out into a little bit more complex concepts. And then hitting the main concepts of trig.
So how how would the, how would the, the sequence go?
It goes the same. So it would be, you know, algebra one, geometry, algebra two, advanced algebra with trig, precalculus. So it just takes the place of that, what we used to call trigonometry.
So trigonometry, we're including an advanced albatross, no, algebra.
Right.
Component in there. So it's, it's a, it's a rework of our trigonometry course, frankly, too.
Yeah, and and I I've always argued from my perspective, I'm an English major, um. Well, I think algebra two is fundamentally the most important class you take in high school, so the more algebra two you get, the more successful our kids are gonna be.
Right, and remember, it's a semester, so you have algebra and, but algebra two is a lot, so. Um, but we do, because we're based on semester base, they take that algebra two. Now they're getting, they're just getting. It's it's really full year of algebra with trigonometry, right? But it's broken up into semesters, so, um, so as the students advance.
Yeah, so if you thought of it as a full year, it would be algebra two, the first half, more algebra in. It's kind of along the.
We can always wait too, if you don't wanna vote on it because he, they just didn't have it all ready to go. So if you wanna hold and when we bring Mr. Mills back. We could also make sure that that piece was there. Mr. Scott doesn't necessarily have to come back for that. I can always answer questions.
I guess, um, with that, um, Ms. Collins, you, you're, one of the many panels you have this week, and I I remiss for not announcing, uh, our superintendent schools. He is leaving to Marshall. He has not left for Marshall. He's just not at this meeting. Um, and so, uh, Dr. Collins is is kindly filling in for him, but um, what are your official direct curriculum? Um, do you have any comments or um, thoughts on the, on these, on the curriculum part of these changes?
So I think they're all great. I think that, um, that the first two around PE, the. The one where they're teaching them to be refs, which is wonderful. Um, and a lot to that, it's not just being a ref and you, all tied to the standards, which is. One of the things that we will need to make sure is happening. And then the second, which is physical education, fitness, sent, you know, fitness work, that's in response to students. That's really things that they're looking for. And we're even looking to expand more because the students have really asked for that. Um, neuroscience, we've had them. On deck to really be doing because we have an expert in in Dr. Duncan. Um, and we've also gotten some funding that. The um, Cohasset Education Foundation has been amazing and they really wanna help us get this off the ground, cause this is innovation. This is not what typically you see at high schools. Um, so that's what the, that's what that funding is for, really, to to really get. Teachers off the ground, something that are really interesting. I mean, then the math for sure. So, you know, we've been doing so much work with math and looking at it from the elementary. BK through twelve, and we're really trying to align it. So this is in response to, to, so what we're seeing is students are coming in. Um, into the next levels and where are we making sure that they have what they need? So we wanna make sure to, um, Mr. Scott's point is. That algebra two, that's a really important place for people to be, in particular for those students that really wanna move up in math. Right? Uh, most kids don't need anything really past algebra two, to be honest with you. However, there are students who just love math and they wanna do it. Or they're gonna go into a field and this allows them to have that stronger foundation, so, um, I'm very supportive of all of it.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll open up the, uh, work for committee members. Mr. Karen, any questions?
I am so thrilled with this wellness. I I just think, especially sports officiating, it's something they can take to college. They can. Do that as a side job for the rest of their lives. They teach them what the rules are and teaches them that, you know, how to get yelled at, I don't know.
I was gonna say, those life skill pieces, right? How you navigate, right? And um, and your presence that you have on a field or court, yeah.
That is super. And also too, is the advanced fitness training. I think that also opens up, um. Students to a new beginning of like, what do they wanna be? You know, they could be in athletic training, they could be, um. Um, personal trainers, uh, yoga instructors. These, these gives them the opportunity to go out there and and understand like. Being in that industry, it's it's a really, it's a, it's a high energy, great industry that you're improving people's lives. So in these two instances, you could, they're gonna teach people, kids, how to improve kids' lives. And I I just can't be, and and also I think, uh, the other piece is great. Definitely addressed some concerns.
Great, great. Thank you, Mr. Karen. Um, it's Leslie.
Thank you. It is exciting. Neuroscience, yay. Very cool. Um. It are, and maybe this is for Dr. Collins as well, the new, um, wellness, um, pieces. Are those in response to the new guidelines the state released earlier? Do those help us get closer to what that looks like?
Not necessarily in response to it, although they've been unpacking them simultaneously with some of the others. So. A lot of the times, this stuff all happens kind of like in parallel. We know that there's a ref shortage, so we, you know, Mr. Ford is on, some of the MIA committees, he's the tournament director, he also is the wellness teacher. So he's plugged into that, plus they're revising the curriculum. Um, so we did an exercise at Dr. Collins' direction, kind of mapping where this would fit into the new one. The other is really student interest generated. Um, you know, what can we do beyond traditional PE?
Cause that is part of the new standards though, too, right? That whole holistic wellness and all those pieces. So. Yes, it is, and it is gonna hit standards, but it just kinda happened like, doctor, I mean, um, Mr. Scott said, at the kind of the same time.
Yeah, some things you incorporate into the existing courses, which is a little bit what we're doing with math. Um, some things. It makes more sense to have an entirely separate course.
I think it's great. It sounds like an independent study almost for those athletes that potentially are, are doing. Athletic endeavors that don't necessarily fit into your typical physical education or the facilities that we have. If you're a swimmer.
We've had cyclists, we've had westerns.
Yeah, if you're a dancer, um, you know, that there are lots of different, um, ways then for those, those students to, uh, follow their passions. And neuroscience. Because. Well, this is great, but I think neuroscience, like, that's next level. That's great.
Scott.
So these are hugely popular topics in college, too. Kids will find their way to something new and interesting. Um, I think there's a whole career field that people may not even know exists, and I think if we can bring it to them in high school, I think that's great.
Yeah.
And it's about putting the right tools in the toolbox, and these are very good. I, I would only say I'm glad to vote on it. I don't wanna stand in the way of progress, but if we wanna wait for the middle school, like whatever, I just, if there's things you need to keep going on in this regard, I think.
Yeah, I mean, we'll keep moving if the vote wants to close.
Good job. This is great.
Ms. Collin.
Sure. Um, thank you, Mr. Scott, as always. Um, I, I have a few questions. First, I, I just wanted your, uh, I, I guess I need a little bit of pedification on the, um, on the grading scale. Um, overall, um, it's, it's foreign to me as someone that went to high school in the early nineties of the four-point-o scale, right? Now, students are like, fine to get to, you know, that they're like, they're, they're now, their goal is to get a five-point-o.
Which you can't get, yes. That is the goal, right? It's five-point-o scale.
Right. Um, I don't, I guess I don't. Why is that necessary? Why, why?
Great question.
I feel like it's, it's like creating this, like, um, I don't even know the word for it. I think you know what I'm getting at. It's like, you know, it's like better than perfect, right? It's like the four-point-o is always perfect. That's perfect. Right? And now we have to, now we have to get better than perfect. And it's like, you know, it's, I, I understand senior high school is some of them even are legally adults, but they're still children. And like, you know, sometimes it's like too much of a good thing can be too much of a good thing. So I, 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 I just wanna get your general thoughts on that and whether there's an ability for us. I don't know if it, it, it may compromise their, um, compromise their, uh, their attractiveness or marketability to colleges. If, if we don't, maybe everyone else does, so we don't wanna be the ones riding a horse for everyone else's car. But I, I, I just, I, I don't know. What are your thoughts?
I have a lot. And I'll, I'll give you the short church version because I, I, I know there's a lot on the agenda. In two thousand eighteen, we started to investigate GPA and kind of compare that to what other schools do. Every school does it differently and every state does it differently. So when we get a kid who transfers from California, for example, they'll have two grades, one per semester, but they aren't even necessarily letter grades. So how does that translate into what we do? Colleges find the same thing. So they basically all do it differently, but they all reweight grade point. Some schools will do a traditional four-point-o where everything's included. Some schools will do a four-point-o where only academic classes are included. Some say, well, but I did AP US and now US one and US two. So isn't that a higher level of work? Shouldn't I get more GPA points? Which is why Cohasset at some point went to the five-point-o scale. Now, five-point-o would mean that you had, you had all AP classes every single year from freshman to senior year and got an A in all, which is impossible. So you can't ever get that five-point-o, but what we have seen is, is a couple of things. One, there's this unhealthy competitiveness that we talked about. So kids who will play the system because we don't wait at non-academic courses. So, you know, if I take, if I take three APs and ban, that might actually put me in a better position than if I took four APs but didn't do so well. Or what if I take five APs and can I do my health online somewhere else and circumvent that whole thing? So, so we really have to kind of limit what that is. So that's one piece of it. Uh, it's just this unhealthy false sense of competition that doesn't benefit anybody. It just creates more stress. The other, and we're not alone in this, is the grades are inflated. You know, Donovan just came back with SATs because grades are inflated. And I, I would say the last time I looked, which was a few years ago, but I think the average grade was a ninety. You know, if you looked at all classes across all grades, um, which is part of why we stopped publishing the monorail because everybody made it, you know, except for a handful of kids who were then kind of singled out as, as not making it. That's something we have to combat, but you, you, you have these two massive competing viewpoints, which is one, this kind of holistic education and lifelong learning, uh, and SEL development and all of that. And a real college system that values GPA and transcripts of what you take and some of the courses that you take and, and all this stuff. So, you know, yeah, you know, we, we have to kind of balance, like, you know, we had this, this conversation among the faculty the other day because there's sometimes a tension between AP courses and non-leveled courses. And, oh, you can finish a test in my room because you're just going over there and that's not that big a deal. And ideally, they would both be of equal weight, but in reality, they're not. So how do you account for both of those things to make our kids competitive, to be successful and eliminate some of the other things? And what elementaries did is they went to standards-based grade. You know, um, have you met these standards? That's great, except you'd get a forty-page report card with, you know, twenty-five standards per course times five courses or twelve courses per year. You'd just be reading standard after standard after standard. So and, and so that's difficult. You know, there was a set of, um, independent schools years ago, and I never saw the results of it, but they, they were studying whether or not they should all do away with GPA. So places like St. Mark's and Roxbury Latin. You know, if we all glom together, knowing that we have a good reputation with schools, if we eliminated GPA, would that affect college admissions? I don't think they ever get to the place where they eliminated, uh, or eliminated grades in report cards. So it, it's a, it's a real obstacle to actual learning. But it's a product of where we're at right now, college admissions.
Okay. I, I thank you for that. Um, it was really insightful and demonstrates your ability as a school principal, but I, I just, um, your dedication to students. I don't know. I, you know, I ask is because every year when we get towards the end of the year, um, our, you know, uh, upperclassmen representatives are always talking about like the major thing. It's stress, right? And, um, I mean, like, when I was in high school, to an extent, yeah, you have some tests, it's like kind of stressful, but it wasn't like overbearing. And I can tell that they're like pretty stressed out about it, you know? And I don't like, I, I just, I just don't know how, how productive that is. And I wonder if, if we can, maybe it's not necessary. May, may, maybe it's not. Maybe, maybe I'm, maybe I'm imagining this, but I, I think it is something where it could end up being more serious. And I think I feel like personally that we're going in the wrong direction with that. So I don't know, maybe there's some way where we can get a bunch of people together to start thinking critically about how, if there's a product that we can come up with that balances the interests of those two things. Because, no, obviously, we, we are cheap as high and we wanna continue that, wanna continue our, our college admissions, but I think we compete with many private schools uh, in that, in that arena. Um, so we don't wanna disadvantage our students, right? But same time, you know, what is more, I mean, we all, we want to, 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 we want to, uh, promote, um, and foster healthy.
Yeah.
Thinking and healthy practices.
So I've been here for about ten years. What I saw in the first five years was, excuse me, you know, the, the average, for lack of a better word, student would take one or two APs a year. Now it's like three or four, what's the magic number? And even when the kids talk to their old siblings, they're like, well, what are you doing? I didn't see that. Like, because the, the impression of it has changed. The, the fact that people don't string out science over four years, that you take physics, biochemistry, all within the first two years. There's no need for that. So, you know, we've talked to people in that first five years about, you know, stringing things out if you're not a science person. There's no need to double up. There's no need to take five majors. There's no need to, you know, overload your schedule with, with AP courses. I, I agree that that stress is, is real and has been mounting. And to some extent, I think COVID broke it in a good way. You know, people had to go home, they had to stop. They walked outside, they had dust and air, they couldn't play sports, they couldn't keep going because that pace wasn't sustainable. And I was really nervous that we were gonna have some serious issue in our hands because of. Uh, and you've seen it in colleges and in other schools.
Was that same pressure starting to build again?
So, yeah, so what we're starting to see is, is, is that, that pressure starting to build. It's not at, at the levels that it was before. The challenge that we'll have is a lot of people are gonna agree, but don't experiment with my kids. You know, but, so, you know, go ahead and change the GPA rules. Make it eight years out and grandfather in the kids from dear, you know? Which is challenging, and you gotta keep up the cause.
Right. Okay.
But it is, it's a big, um, it's a big study. I, I, I would be very interested in undertaking something like that. I, I think it would be, you know, it'd be wise if, if we did it as a conglomerate of schools, you know, like an Usian and Go-Go, that's pretty. And, and kind of came to some consensus the way that some of the elite private schools were looking to do.
Because we're not unique.
It's a big lift.
No, I'm not saying we are. I just don't think the school committee for any of them else's town, so I just.
Oh, yeah, no, I just think that you're right, you know, Scott, about thinking about connecting with others. You know, other just, other schools, because they are in the same boat. We hear about it all the time.
The principles that I have, the same conversations all over us, you know, it's, you know, even, you know, things like National Honor Society, you know, that, that list keeps growing and growing and growing. And, and, you know, I've had one parent argue, and I, I don't disagree that, you know, if everybody's worthy of it, then maybe everybody's worthy of it. I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but then what makes it distinctive, you know? So it's, it's, it's an interesting idea.
So maybe we'll, I, I'll suggest that we put it on as an agenda item so that we can talk about, it's not really, it was just, it got me thinking. So, and, and, um, Mr. Dallas would be really happy to hear that I have, um, questions related to the actual program of studies.
I, I did entertain this because the GPA rank is in the program of studies, so it's part of our.
I mean, the hardest thing we had to do last year is when your valutatory and your salutary are one, one thousandth of a point away.
Oh, yeah.
Who's smarter than me? I mean, we really, are we really that accurate?
All right, well, um, yeah, well, I'll suggest at the end, maybe, maybe that's, that's something that you. All right. Um, all right, back to regularly scheduled. ELA, um, is there some, like, advan, I'm just thinking forward to, uh, to college writing. Um, a lot of it, as you know, is, is heavily research-based. Do we have like an advan, I know we have research, you know, um, instruction here, but do we have like an advanced, like, college preparatory, like junior, senior, upperclassman level, like advanced research class, which is advanced research and writing sort of thing?
We don't have a class dedicated just to research. We do do a lot of research in upper-level social studies classes and to a fair extent in upper-level English classes. So the writing is actually one of our stronger points, and a lot of college graduates will come back, and that's the one thing that they highlight, they get the most out of. Um, and I think part of that is the time on learning. So full year of English nine, full year of English ten. One or two sections of AP English eleven and up to three sections of AP twelve. You have a lot of kids who are getting the full year for four years, which is the equivalent of eight years worth of school. And a lot of writing that goes into that.
All right. So you, so you're confident with the current programming that we are providing students enough exposure to robust, research-based programming?
Yeah, what I would like to see, and I'm not alone, and the faculty would agree, is the next step is to differentiate research-based writing per discipline. So, uh, you know, literary analysis is different than scientific analysis, is different than psychology.
Yeah, that's great.
Um, and, and the formats for citing sources are different. And the way you phrase things and the way you structure things are different, different than business writing. So, you know, almost like, you know, James Joyce's Ulysses. Having kids understand that all of these are valid. It depends on your audience. It depends on the way that people are expecting to have information communicated to them. Um, and to throw a wrinkle in that, Mr. Palmieri also questioned what the future of the written word is gonna be. You know, are, are we in a, a social media phase where you're not communicating that way as, as a primary means anymore? It's a really good question, you know? Yeah. So do we need to do more public speaking? Yeah. You know, that would be something I'd love to see.
Okay. Is that, is that, do you think that's included in the leadership special?
We do it in the leadership course, yeah.
Okay, that's good. Um, that sort of rolls into my last question, uh, which, uh, is the social studies programming. Um, I know the middle school has like a, a, has civics course. We, I, I, do we have like a, like, we don't have like a political science and government course, like, why not? I feel like, I feel like there's, there are a lot of kids here, many of whom come to this committee as liaisons, that I feel like may have a future in public service. And it would be great to have them exposed to that initially here in Cohasset. They go off to college and maybe that, I don't know, maybe, maybe that, that lights a sort of spark for them. But we don't have that, we don't offer that. Like, do you think that there would be, A, an interest? B, do you feel that there's a need in the programming or a room to build something like that?
I'd be interested to go back to the social studies department and see where they, they think that fits. Because they have an interest in it for sure. Not necessarily as a course, but, you know, model Congress, model U-MAN. Uh, US history and, and the different things that they put in. The electives they have tend to be a little bit, not scattered, but just more diverse. So psychology, sociology, conspiracy theory, um, global studies, Holocaust, you know, those types of things kind of fill out the core courses. We do use VHS for AP government. It doesn't get a ton of enrollment, but it gets some. But I wonder if, if we had a government course, would that be a semester? Would it be a year long? Would it be an AP? Who would teach it? What would go?
I'm envisioning something like, or like in practice, like, how does the government work, you know? What does the governor do? How do you budget? How does a bill, you know, what, where, how does it go through committees, all that stuff? So there's like a, you know, a real understanding, you know, constituent outreach, all of that sort of stuff, you know?
And the interest is, and I don't know what, what the eighth grade civics curriculum has involved in that. Um, because I wonder if that would be duplicating efforts coming in, and I just don't know.
I, I don't either, so maybe it's something we can think about.
I, I, I would just add this point. My children, my son Jack was off to Washington with Safe Harbor and the next day he was on Boston going to UN representing China. So I, I, you know, I always said, if we let these children run our world, we get some stuff done. So kudos to you guys, because I think this, this school, as a parent of two kids that are in high school, three kids. Uh, I think we do a really good job of letting our kids know. So kudos to you and your staff, because I couldn't be more thrilled. My kids are, they know who the state rep is. They know, they're into with politics. And so you'd, you'd be surprised at how our kids and.
I think the civics project that we offer kids.
In eighth grade, yeah.
Yeah, all the way through.
Yeah, 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 in grade mostly.
And it's not as robust as it could be, but, you know, I will say of, of any department, the social studies folks are smart, courageous, like, they are not stuck in their ways. If, if there's an opportunity, they'll jump all over it, so. You know, would be good, I'll go back to Mr. Wilson with that for sure.
All right. Well, thanks. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Collin. Um, I, Mr. Scott, I have, I have no questions on the program of studies. I do have one comment, and it's not for you, as much as it is for the community. Read this thing. It is absolutely amazing, the offerings that we have. And I just, every time we do this, I remember the first subcommittee meeting I came to where we had this on the agenda. And I was absolutely blown away. The, the, the stuff that is available to our kids rivals any education, educational institution that's out there. So thank you for being a steward of this and putting this together. So, um, with that, uh, we do have, this is an item that the committee has voted on. Uh, we had some items, I will, um, first, give feedback if people want to vote on this or want to delay voting. Uh, if, uh, there's no need to delay voting, I, you know, would, would promote the motion, but first, any, any concerns on timing? The committee members, if people are ready to vote, I will, uh, ask for a motion to approve the program studies.
Make the motion today.
And a motion is made by Mr. Kenny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Collin? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, the program of studies is unanimous agreement. President Scott, thank you very much for your presentation, your work on this, and make it a reality for our kids.
Absolutely. Appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Closes off our invited guests. Uh, we'll now move on to school updates. I touched on it just a moment ago. Our superintendent schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan is, um, where is he? I don't know. It doesn't matter. We have, uh, our assistant superintendent, Dr. Leslie Scollins, who's going to, um, to, to lead us through our school news. So, Dr. Scollins, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm looking. I have so many things open right now. Great, so, um, I know we had a lot to do, so I just have a couple of things to share. A lot of work here, I didn't realize what Dr. Sullivan was doing all the time, I saw him inside, but there's, there's devices, there's things, there's.
Windows.
There's windows, there's.
Well, and normally, there's a pair, you're doing the job of two people.
Yeah, don't give me too much credit, Dr. Scollins.
You're right, I'm not, I'm gonna take it all myself, so anyway. All right, here we go, so. So I. Did show you, um, the chocolate, isn't, it just was really cool and, um, just such a nice thing to see, so. Um, I'm gonna do a huge plug too for our Credit for Life, so that is, that is Friday, um, I know I've already talked about it. Um, I talked to, um, Mrs. Fitzgerald about some of the things about it, cause I just. I love this event, it is just, um, a wonderful way for our seniors to have a little taste of what real life is about when you leave. Uh, because that fiscal, um. Literacy is such an important part. Of what, um, what our kids need to know about, so, uh, anyway, it's in year three. Um, and, uh, which is really exciting, and also, um. They were awarded a grant for thirty-two hundred dollars to continue this work and to expand what they've already done, and they got that from the State Tredits Financial Education Innovation. Uh, yeah, I thought it was really wonderful, and so that helps because there are costs that come with this, everyone is wonderful and volunteers their time, they volunteer. Um, supplies, but there still is money to, you know, that we need. Um, in particular, they buy some nice prizes for kids, cause there's raffles. Um, and this year they've expanded it to include a panel with Q and A, which is bigger than the panel they had before. Um, they have sixteen booths, which is larger than what they've had in the past, they have a headshot and a photo booth, they have a mock interview station, which is, um. Wonderful, a raffle, prizes, and then lunch with the volunteers, which will follow afterwards, so, the, I, and you heard. Nate talk about it, the seniors dress up, this is a really big event, and these are the panels that come in and give us their time. Um, and they are so open with our students, and our students are really great about asking really good questions. So we have Melanie Seaborn, who's the head of customer experience at Forge, Kristen Richards, pediatric colonologist at Boston Children's Hospital. Um, Zayad Al Rashid, executive vice president of Omnicom, Steven Sheffield, um, of Steven Sheffield Photography and Mixed Media, and then Paul Moriarty. He is related to Mrs. Moriarty, our, uh, direct, our, um. Department Chair for the Arts, uh, Vice President of Commercial Banking and South Shore Bank, he's actually bringing people with him, which is amazing. Um, and just, um, Mrs. Gerald wanted me to make sure that I give a big thanks to Todd and Jody Goff for organizing the panel. Um, also South Shore Bank for sending a team to run the credit counseling booth. And the thirty-five faculty and community members who volunteered, however, she still could use more volunteers, so please, if you have any time on Friday. Please contact, um, Mrs. Fitzgerald, but I also wanna re, wanna really acknowledge, um. Mrs. Fitzgerald for doing this, um, this is a true passion for hers, and she spends a lot of time outside of her. School day to make sure that this happens, and so, um, it's a wonderful event, so. I don't have pictures, I will have pictures on Friday, so those, watch for those, those will be in the newsletter for.
Dr. Scollins, what time is the, um?
It is nine to twelve. Okay, so, um. If anyone can, and if you wanna stop by, please do, um, it's really a great event, uh, and I, I've really enjoyed it. So, um, and then the middle school had a dance last week, and they actually, it was actually a deer help. Um, which, yes, exactly.
Yeah, we had the senior set of the.
Right, exactly, so, snow in the dark, um, and the pictures are kinda dark because it was dark. And, uh, but it was really wonderful, a lot of parents helped out with that, um, this, it's actually staff on the right with some of their, um. Light up stuff and a lot of, a lot of staff, I think it's Mr., I think it's actually Principal Mills on the left with the white. With the white sweater, and this, this is wonderful, it's just so fun, um, and they said, you know, I talked to Mr. Mills today, and he said it was just a wonderful, wonderful event. Um, kids had a great time dancing and it just, it was a great theme, they loved it, and so, so those were really just a couple of things I wanted to talk about, we had a lot going on, but, um. I figured just a couple of.
I heard great things about the dance. Kids really loved it.
They did, and that's what you want, you want them to have these period of times to socialize, um, outside of school, be together, they really enjoy each other. Right, so, uh, it's a really nice experience. So those are the quick updates.
And they also, we just probably wanna, just what we talked about earlier, the UN, uh, Boston.
Yep.
B C.
Yep, I know.
My stem and staff are taking our students to Boston to, um. Boston University, uh, putting it on at the Wesley Cartley Plaza. And so Jack was away for three days and he had a wonderful time bonding with all his friends, and. So they thought that was.
That was really, yeah, there are so many things going on, and Nate did such a nice job, he kinda. Explained everything, so I really can't come after him, because he did such a wonderful job, but, um, yeah, there are just so many things going on, and the students are very involved. In a lot of different aspects, not, they're not, they're not one-dimensional students at all, they really.
Thank you, Dr. Scollins on the school news, I think you, um, you'll still a little bit have the floor. Uh, included in your materials on exhibit D one is a preview of the district calendar, this is still. Um, subject to finalization, still, uh, subject to, um, presentation and, uh, discussion with the CTA. Um, but as is a fairly standard process here, uh, we, uh, often give information to the committee for review, so you can digest it. So the community can see it, and then in our next meeting, we'll have a more, um. A more robust discussion. So I don't think there's anything, unless Dr. Scollins or something you wanna point out, or there's anything we need to discuss or deliberate?
No, I do think though, there are a couple of things that you are gonna have to consider, um, we are waiting for information around, uh, voting.
Yes.
Right, so that's gonna impact the calendar.
So it's primary and general.
Yes.
September third, November fifth, I think, are the dates, so.
Yeah, so September third is gonna be our first day of school.
Right.
So we need to look at that, um, and, and then in November.
Just switch out, we'd have to do a full day professional development, right?
We can talk about that, so those are all things that we consider, um, so.
And, and just for background, um, the issue is that the. And now the town hall discussion has come full into the school committee. So with the, um, town hall now being suitable for, uh, a voting place, the town is looking for alternative venues. For voting, one of the potential consideration is the facilities of the, of the schools. So we are looking into where we can, if we can help out, uh, with the minimal amount of disruption to the educational mission of schools. And so, two things that are up for debate are, not today, but are just indicated on here is the potential for. A conflict with our first day of school on September third, and, um, again, whether or not we would move around a development day, so that's a, um. That's a thing that we will learn more at, at, in the formal presentation, but, uh, as a, as a, and then this is also another year of the operation of our, um. Decision about starting the school before or after Labor Day, depending on whether it's an early or late Labor Day, so you can see that, see that there, so. Any, we don't, I guess I didn't, we don't even deliberate, but if there are any observations the committee wanna make.
The issue, they wanna hold voting here, one of the schools?
Yes.
Well, they, like, yeah, they're looking, okay, so they're, like, considering.
And what we may do is do horse trading, allow them to vote here if we can park our buses there, so. Um, anyway, it's, it's currency.
I do have a concern with, um. Good Friday, uh, for years, we had Good Friday off. Now we're going. Two half-days and then going back to school on the eighteenth, from right, uh, Easter's on Sunday, correct?
Usually.
She just said that, it's Easter, she goes on Sunday, I'm like, I, I get that. Um, are we, uh, are we looking at, um, just because. There's a, I, I, I would love, I would have loved to ask. Mr. Scott. What the absent rate is on that day, and I'll be honest with you, you might as well just take it off the calendar.
You mean, oh, students, students absent?
So, yeah, so before we would like vote on this, I would like to get the attendance of Good Friday. Last year, and just say if it's a, it, look, we're wasting our time and our, our energy if the kids aren't gonna get a learning day. Right, if, if kids are taking it off anyway, so. But I would ask the chairman if we could just table this. Until we get that information, and then we can discuss if it's worth even having school on Good Friday. Cause if only half the kids are going, why are we having?
Mr. Kenny, your request is granted, especially the couple of people that wanna vote on it, so we will consider this at a later date. Uh, but Dr. Scollins, I, I, I would like to, uh, Mr. Kenny to get the information on attendance.
We can do that.
Um, and we can, and again, I don't wanna go into the deliberations at this point, but Mr. Kenny, your, your point is, is, is well made.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that is a preview of the calendar, uh, and then also, to the extent there's community feedback, uh, we welcome community feedback. Um, we often get community feedback on the calendar. During the school year, so if there is community feedback you'd like to give us on the calendar, the timing of days, vacation days. This would be a really swell time to do so, so, uh, please keep that in mind. So. Thank you very much, we'll now move on to our.
Sorry, I also just sort of put forward about the calendar, that perhaps we think creatively. Um, about voting space, and if it's at the high school, that maybe the high school would do something outside of the building that day that is. Team building or something like that to start their year off on a. Strong note doing community service or something of that, like, so that the school. Year does not need to be disturbed, and we can vote.
Yes. And there's a lot of variables, and, and I don't have full insight into it, the schools are not the only, um, venue or consideration, so it's not that. If we can't accommodate, we, we don't, we get this franchise, but, um, you know, we are trying to find ways to help with that, see, it's a, a fabulous suggestion, though, I, I, I do like that. So it's something to consider, so, uh, moving on to our agenda block, E, teaching and learning, uh, we're, um. Here with, uh, Ms. Barbara Swonka, who's gonna give us a special education update with a couple of special, uh, features, so.
Nice to hear your time.
The floor is yours.
I want to share. Thank you. The, um, the last time that I was here at school committee, we, um, had some conversations around out of district and the trajectory over years and so on and so forth. It is the first item that I am going to speak about tonight, just a little continuation of that. Um, based on some more information requests that, um, that I received around that. This is actually the slide that I shared before, but you can see in the far right corner, I added a pink. Column to it, um, where I discussed there, if we looked across, um, a five-year span. The out-of-district placements with whom the school district has engaged, um, and these would be placements, um, again, that. The school district has actively engaged with, around providing for the needs of our children who, um, are having a hard time. Accessing the curriculum and being able to meet with, you know, any success or progress here, um, due to perhaps the. Level of their need with relative to, you know, their special education services, um, and those schools would be. Amigo School. Cardinal Cushing, the Boston Fagashi School. North River, our Pilgrim Area Collaborative. The Riverview School, as I've spoken before, we sometimes partner with, um, situat public schools. Um, our sour and South Shore Educational Collaborative. Uh, Perkins School for the Blind, Ivy Street School, Chamberlain School. Um, if I look across the trajectory of, you know, those five years, these are the schools. That, um, most often come up that we have partnered with and been able to. Partner with to provide services for our students who cannot, um, be searched within our own particular school. District here.
So, um, so, this is one of the agenda items I wanted to discuss here, and one of the things that. And part of this is coming up from community feedback, but I, I want us to get a little smart on. This process, and so these are, these are the numbers, I guess, um. Can you share with us, yeah, I guess. The absolute number of students that are abs, that are, that are placed, uh, out, and then also I'd like to understand a little bit of the process about how we conclude. That, uh, a student needs to be, that student, a student needs can't be met here, and how that works vis a vis the various, the parents. And then what happens when a student is outplaced, do they continue to have touch point, what, what are the continuing touch points with the district and the community?
Absolutely, so, um, my next couple of slides are actually going to show that.
That was a segue for you.
Given, thank you so much for setting that up for me, I really appreciate it. So, um, if we were to continue here. So, um. Online, if you look under, um, my portion. This special education or student services, we will see our program, our, um, process guide there. And within the process guide, there is a section in it devoted to the out-of-district placements, and what I've done is I've taken that information and created a flow chart to discuss here tonight. So, there are times when, within which our public school, um, sometimes the educational team has some concerns around. The placement of the students, they've been tracking students, they've been watching progress, they've been watching for access to the curriculum. They've been watching all of the things that go into a student kind of being able to. In every aspect holistically be a member of our school district. And start to have some concerns around students' ability to do all of those things. And what happens then is that educational team, and it's, it, it is a special educational team. Within that school will share those concerns with the team chairperson. The team chairperson at the elementary level is Catherine Green, at the secondary level, it is Michael Stapleton. And the team chairperson will reach out to me and. Share those concerns that we're really worried about this child, this is, you know, a lot of things have been tried. And we really have some, some placement concerns. So when I hear that, we consult with that educational team. And then. What we do is we reach out to the family and the entire team comes together, so when an I E P team meeting is held at that point in time. The purpose of this is because if a student is not making progress and we have concerns, we are obligated to update the I E P to meet those students' needs. We need to add things in and look at, you know, what is going on, what do we need to add to make this more robust? And to meet the needs of the child. An I E P. Is what drives placement. An out-of-district decision would never be made outside of a nine repeating process. Because when you go through an I E P process. Placement is the very last thing that you do, because it is dependent upon the needs that are reflected in that I E P. So, an I E P completely just, you know, drives a placement decision. And at the end of an I E P, we take a look at all of the things that are in that student's I E P. Where do they land in terms of. Level of need, are they in a full inclusion program where the level of need is low? Are they in a partial inclusion program where they are getting more special education services? And the level of need is going from perhaps a mile to a more moderate? Does their programming look primarily self-contained, where the vast majority, if not all of their services are taking place outside of general ed? And they are a high level of need, and those determinations are what drive the placement. If in fact, that placement is considered to reach a level at which within our public school. We cannot provide those services. That are in the I E P and that we need an out-of-district placement to really rise to that level. What we do is we use, just like we do within our own school system. Fake and least restrictive environment standards to make those decisions, we make those decisions. Within our own school for children on I E Ps, we make them when we know we are considering an out-of-district placement.
And for that on specialist out there, can you tell us what fake means?
Yes, a free and appropriate education. Public education. So when we look at and we consider out-of-district placements. Typically, a collaborative placement is really considered to be the one that is perhaps the least restrictive standard. And then from there, depending upon student need as identified in the I E P. If it continues to rise to needing more, we can look at approved public day programming. We can look at approved private day programming. We may have to be looking at approved residential programming, which is the most restrictive. If we cannot find. Programming to meet students' needs as they are identified. And we need to look at unapproved or out-of-state programs, they are only considered when all approved programs have been exhausted. And sometimes that happens, it's rare, but it does. But this is all, you know, determined by the state.
And this process here, where we're going through the, um. You know, what, what's the posture of, and involvement of parents versus the, is that also gonna be the next slide? We did not first this, by the way, it's just, it's, it's a very natural flow.
It is.
I'll, I'll just stop now.
No, it's been wonderful. So, this team that I, that I, I actually alluded to before, and I'm going to go back to it right here, where I started saying an I E P team meeting is held, obviously. Parents are an integral part of that team, they are part of that process and that decision. They are part of that process and that decision-making. The team discussed placement using the I E P as the criteria. And then if there is agreement, and that is agreement with the family, I as the director would send release of information forms to the parents. Only when parents agree and sign those releases can we actually start sharing information with out-of-district programming and can we start considering that? And, you know, with the background experience that I have, being, having been prior to here in Cohasset, an out-of-district coordinator, as well as an assistant director and now a director, and my knowledge of the out-of-district programming and the way this works, um, you know, we make our best recommendations given the profile of the child and the programs that we know as programs that we would consider and uphold as the school district. And that is what we would ask the parents to provide releases for, sign on for, and those out-of-district programs to engage with us and tell us what their thoughts are on the packet that they receive. Typically, what this release of information is for is so that we can send the most up-to-date I E P, the progress reports, the attendance, um, any of the most updated testing for the student so that a full picture of the student is sent to the out-of-district placements. Those out-of-district placements then respond to me as the director. And what they tell me at that point in time is whether or not there is a good fit for the student, if the student's needs could be met in such a placement, if they have room for that, and if they then can reach out to the family and engage around this. So if all of those things are met, then the out-of-district placement, as well as myself, will reach out to the parents. And depending upon the placement, you know, different programs do it different ways, but the process could include a parent meeting between that out-of-district placement and the parents. Um, it could be a parent visit, it could be a parent and a student visit. And then a team meeting will typically follow up between the district, the placement, and the parents. And then if an out-of-district placement is determined, a starting date is determined, and then there are still some more things to do. We need to establish transportation. Myself is in our district, it's myself as the director of student services that then becomes the case manager for that. And as that, and I, I always enforce this with my families, the students are Cohasset students first and foremost. And that tie to us is maintained through me. I monitor student progress, I do visiting of the program to see the student there. I do the team meetings there. I hear from that program in terms of how the student is doing. The I E P comes through me, the progress reports come to me from the placement and go up to families as well. And, um, as all of that continues to go on and we became very, we are continuing to be very active in that, if a student is demonstrating readiness, then re-entry, which is always the goal into Cohasset public schools, can be discussed at a point in time at which it makes sense. But that is, and the out-of-district placements know that, that that is always our goal. We are always considering those students Cohasset students first and foremost and looking for them to come back. And the placement is looking to help them build the skills that they need to be able to come back to their public school district.
I don't know what the next slide is, so I'm not going to say anything.
Considering that's not about out-of-district process, that would be good for now. But, um, but at this point in time, if people want to comment or ask questions about this, um, I am, I am happy to. Yes.
This is excellent. Um, oh, sorry. So, um, when the, when the families agree to release information and it goes to the out-of-district options, are they agreeing to anything else at that point or only to share the information?
Only to share the information.
Okay.
Absolutely, because that, and this is very important, and I do say this, I'm so glad you brought that up because I do say this to my families as well. They are in control of this process because nothing happens without their agreement or their signature. And right all the way through to the team meeting, there is an agreement to placement that is a page in the I E P. And without a parent's signature on that agreement to placement, that placement doesn't take place. So when we sign those releases of information, that is exactly all we are doing is we are sharing information so that conversations can be had. But up until they sign that placement page, there is no change.
And then, when and if the student is ready to come back, whose decision is that?
Again, that is the team and it is between myself representing Cohasset,
Yeah.
the out-of-district placement representing the progress that the child has made and the parents as the most integral part of it.
Okay, that's great.
Any questions?
I follow up a parent question. At the very top, it seems like this process is initiated by the educational team. Is our parents considered part of the educational team? And if not, do parents ever, can they ever initiate this process for an out-of-district placement?
So right here where it says the educational team shares a placement, so with the team chairperson, right at that moment in time, it is within the school because it's just conversational. It is just like we're consulting, we're thinking about it. Why is the student not meeting with success? What more could we be doing? And we need to convene an I E P team at which the parent comes on board and we say, you know what, we have some concerns here. We need to update our I E P to meet the student needs. And as a natural part of updating that I E P, then that I E P lends itself to a placement conversation, which the parent is obviously therefore. Do parents ever initiate a placement conversation? Yes, sometimes parents do if they are concerned. But it is the I E P that drives it. And that's the important part is that we reconvene the I E P team with those parents then and say, here's what we're seeing the child needs and can we or can we not meet these needs? Thank you.
Any other questions? Professor Wonka on out-of-placements.
I would say, yes, first, can you just remind me how lucky we are? Thank you for what you do for the kids. Um, that said, I didn't sue you as well. I think, I think it's the team of, of non-administrators that put this all together. Uh, you made a great point about calling these are all Cohasset students. I think that, I, I, I'm feeling a little guilty that I don't know as much as we should probably know about the other schools that the kids are at, right? Like Agashia, I've visited there because I have enough. On this spectrum, so I'm very aware of what other schools are. But I feel like as a school committee member, I don't like to, I don't think I know those schools well enough to be able to keep them accountable, right? I think we all need to like, it, it's a lot, it's a lot of us, the more we know about these schools that we'll be able to give our, keep an eye on these schools in a sense where if the parents feel like they're not getting somewhere, these are still our kids.
Yes, they are.
Like, I would, I would ask you if you could maybe spotlight the Agashia and, you know, how, what's it made of? All these other schools that you had mentioned. So next, if we could kind of bring that in and, you know, show them on the website, how they're doing, because I think that's important for us as school committee members to know what these parents are going through and what schools they're in, because I don't. And, and, and I say even social vote tech, I, I, I'd like to know a little bit more about that. I think you're making a good point saying these are Cohasset students. I'd like if we could.
And this is a lot to dig, to digest for tonight. I would be happy to kind of spotlight and highlight and give, you know, an, an insight into some of the schools that I listed in that pink slide, if you will, um, about, you know, what are those schools about and, and how do they provide service and, and things like that?
I'd like to say.
School committee meeting?
Oh, I think that's a, a, a great idea. I, I want to just back it up and frame it within the scope of the, the school committee responsibilities and oversight, which is not necessarily to oversee these schools, but rather to understand the process by which they're selected. So, Mr. Wonka, maybe for one of our next updates, if you could talk to us about how that list is developed, you know, are there certain qualifications that you look for in these schools that are listed maintained by the state? We don't need to talk about it now.
Yeah.
We have the agenda, but I think to Mr. Kearney's point, us having a baseline understanding about the diligence that you perform.
Yes.
In looking at these schools and selecting and recommending the schools would be helpful in making sure that we're doing our job for, for our students.
And absolutely, right. That was something else that I did want to bring up to you is that where it says right there, monitor student progress, that monitoring of our students and of the programs they are in falls on me once they are placed. And it, and it, it does that by through the student.
Um, do you have something?
Just your response to Mr. Carr's question, begs the question, begs the follow-up question in my opinion. What happens when there's no agreement? Like those families do not agree. And the ed team thinks out-of-district placement is necessary. Um, maybe it is objectively necessary. Family does not agree and will not agree to share materials, will not agree to um, send their child to an out-of-district placement. Then what happens?
So none of that can happen without parent agreement? So parents do have to sign I E Ps and placement pages in order for those things to happen for students, but the Bureau of Special Education Appeals has a wide variety of avenues for us to take to work with parents to create understanding and agreement. And they're not adversarial at all. So we can appeal either the family or the district to ask for remediation so that the parents can present their side to an impartial mediator and the school district can present their side. And we can see if we can reach an agreement and be a higher level of understanding and, um, you know, proceed in the best way for the student. But there are all kinds of avenues within special education to involve, you know, the Bureau of Special Education Appeals and all of the different, um, you know, groups that we have to help us do that.
Okay.
So sometimes, um, you know, sometimes families will hire outside counsel and we will use our special education counsel and let the councils talk together and get a better understanding from both sides communicated both to the district and to the families. And sometimes that helps us.
And what if there's no resolution to that, that non-binding process? In other words, like I, what I'm driving at is uh, unwillingness of a family to have their child placed at a district placement. Placing aside the appropriateness of the district's recommendation.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, families don't agree, that non-binding process is not yielded to resolution. Um, what is done with the student at that point?
So at that point in time, we have to continue to, you know, do our best and work with the student. And we are going to be having to probably put more alternate things in place than we typically do within our school district to make sure that students are, you know, safe and learning and getting the most that they can. Um, and, and then there are, you know, there are other avenues. There are binding agreements. We can apply for a hearing where the family can apply for a hearing.
Um, and then the, the flip side, you know, if it's difficult, parent doesn't want their kid outplaced, what about where the parent does and the, there's a disagreement with the, with the district, is it the same sort of process there?
It is the same sort of process there. It is. But again, the important part to that is that it is the I E P and need of the child that drives placement. Placement is not separate um, or does not come first and then.
It's not a goal in and of itself. Any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Wonka, thank you. This was a, this was a fabulous outline, exactly what I was, I was hoping to get out of this, so. You know, there's, there's, you know, this is an area that I think we haven't focused on, and so uh, there may be further questions as we, as we move forward, but I really appreciate the outline. Thank you. Uh, so now the next is a primer on circuit breaker, which we'll talk about.
It's not actually a primer. What I wanted to do was I just wanted to talk a little bit about circuit breaker. I, I don't have a slide for you on it. But what I wanted to talk about is, um, so circuit breaker is a system within the state and certainly Ms. Owen can jump in with me at any time here whereby there is a, we, we all know that special education is a costly endeavor. And there is a baseline amount that is set by the state every year. And if in providing needs for students, that baseline amount is achieved, if you will, you include that in your application to circuit breaker. And about seventy-five percent of that comes back to the district to help with the costs of providing education to students with special needs that could potentially be a very costly endeavor. And that is what circuit breaker is intended to do. It's intended to kind of help with that cost. It is intended to, you know, help schools provide the best that they can for students and also to provide and start developing their own programming. Because a lot of the costs that get approved through circuit breaker are out-of-district costs. So if when we get some of that money back, we can use some of it to start building some of our own programming. And we've talked a lot here about the programming that we've built since I've come aboard. Um, my predecessor also built some wonderful programming, our in-district programs at our elementary level. Um, you know, that, that is in fact what we are supposed to be doing with that. Now, we know that in a small district such as ours, sometimes it doesn't take much for us to tip the scales in our budget with special education costs. Sometimes, you know, one or two students who move in who are perhaps high needs and out-of-district really can affect the budget to a great degree. Circuit breaker has something that is called extraordinary relief. And it is for exactly that. When, when something extraordinary happens to your budget because things like that have happened, students have either, you know, suddenly risen to a very high level of need or they're, you know, maybe students have unexpectedly moved in or whatever. Um, you can apply for that extraordinary relief. We applied a couple of years ago for extraordinary relief and did receive it. And it helps balance out those unexpected costs. And, um, we will be applying again this year for that. Because we've been, you know, listening to Ms. Owen talk about the budget and so on and so forth. There is another relief package this year because there was such a percentage increase in um, private school placements. Um, that there's another, it looks like it is going to be a one-time, but you never know, state um, relief package that is out there to help offset some of the percentage increase of costs of out placements. Um, and we are applying for that as well. So, um, this year, uh, we are busy not only with our regular circuit breaker application, but for the two relief packages the state is offering this year and, um, and are very hopeful that those will be coming through.
Thank you. Mr. Wonka, thank you for Rob being such an effective steward of our resources as well as our student services program.
I do have one other question, just to wrap this up. If I, if we could ask, like, what do you need as far as the budget? Um, one of the things that, at the last meeting that we had with the administrators that I, that I, I just sticks out in my head is a special needs kindergarten teacher. That, how can we advocate for that? Like, if I, if I was to ask you, what, what are the needs? That's what I got. Is there anything else in your department that you could see that you would, like a wish list in a way? Uh, because you don't really see it in a capital as much as it needs to be out there. So what are the things that you, you see? Is that one of them?
I would say, and I, I know I advocated for this in our last meeting, I really see the need for another school adjustment counselor at our elementary level. And a lot of what perhaps a special education kindergarten teacher could bring to us, a lot of it is about regulation and learning to be a student when you are that young and a student on an I E P. And when I drill down into the services that are the primary services for students who are that young, a school adjustment counselor can really do a lot of that work.
What grade is that?
And that, that would be actually in kindergarten.
Okay, cool.
And so I would see and advocate for us adding a school adjustment counselor so that there can be one full-time one at Deer Hill and one at the Asgood. And then see the results of that with those kindergartners and see the services that can be provided to within those classes for those kids. And then do another analysis and see if we still have a continuing need for a special educator who is a kindergarten teacher, which we may have, but see what this has provided for it.
So it's kind of like a, I, I think that's very important because it's a proactive approach. Because like, pay me now, pay me later. If we don't catch it early, then we're going to catch it later. And that's why I think, I think that we can really dial in on like, well, how did we get there? Like, did we do enough services in kindergarten? And, and, you know, again, we're going to be talking about budgets in the next couple of minutes. And I just want to emphasize to the committee that this has been brought up, that again, this is a way to invest in the future that we're going to get later on. So like, as, as far as the finance goes, I think that if we invest. as, as far as the finance goes, I think that if we invest in, in, in a, in a, in an early education adjustment council, I think we're going to get out.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Any other comments for Mr. Wong on student services? Great. Anything else? Is this, is anything else?
I, I actually do.
Perfect.
I don't want to take too long, but
Yes. Oh, this is our standard, our standard presentation?
Yes, our data for us.
Of course. You know, we didn't start with that, so I, I'm running through my agenda too quickly.
Yes. So um, you could see that for the month of January here at the elementary level, we had five annual reviews. We had twelve at the secondary level. We had four out of districts, which that was me. That kept me very busy. Um, but if we were to look down to reevaluations, um, oh, two at the elementary level, both of which who maintained um, eligibility and seven at the secondary level also. Um, and then I know the interest one is the initial evaluation at the elementary level. During the month of January, we had um, eight initial evaluations. Um, if you look at them, three of those came through our MTSS process. Um, one was eligible and one was not. Two of those came through our parent process. One from Cohasset Public Schools, a student who was eligible. And one from a non-cohasset public school, also eligible. And then three early intervention students who, as you remember, they enter through there into our preschool. Um, two of those students were eligible and one was not. And at the secondary level, we had um, two referrals that came to us through MTSS. One of those were eligible and one was not. Um, one who came to us through a parent referral was not eligible. Um, and that was a Cohasset Public School one and one through a non-cohasset public school student who was eligible. So we had a, there were no independent evaluations however to review this month. So we did have a very busy month in terms of meetings, as you can see. And that kind of our referral on our MTSS process, you know, is staying strong and continuing to do its work. So I was very happy about that. And my last thing that I just feel like I do have to say to you sideways here. I can see where I can, you might be able to rotate it. There we go. Uh, because we have a CPAC meeting tomorrow. Just what I wanted to bring to your attention was that A, we are having a CPAC meeting tomorrow.
What time is that? At eleven?
It's at eleven o'clock, yes, in our community conference room. And that what we are going to be discussing at that CPAC meeting is the new IEP. So our um, special educators have been being trained on the new IEP as this year has gone on. Um, in the CPAC meeting tomorrow, I'm going to talk about some of these basic differences between old and the new IEPs. I know that earlier this year, um, the committee asked for kind of a side-by-side um, view of this, if you will, to see what the differences are. I will tell you, the IEP is so different, we can't possibly go in a page-by-page format. But I can show you in a side-by-side what the changes are. And then in CPAC tomorrow, we're actually going to take ourselves through about half of the new IEP to show not just this to the families, but to walk them through the new IEP about halfway through. And then in April, we will finish the IEP, the second half of it in our CPAC meeting. But for our purposes tonight, you can see that um, the IEP has not been updated since two thousand and one. Um, the two thousand and one IEP form was an eight-page IEP. Whereas the new form is a sixteen-page IEP. So we know going in that IEP meetings are going to be longer than they previously were.
Ms. Wong, just for, for time's sake, we don't need to go, we can take this as read. Uh, are there any particular? It looks like they've doubled it basically, the link below this stuff. Are there any particular key points that uh, you want to highlight for the committee?
There are, if I may.
Yep.
One is that it is again, a very, and we go back to kind of the beginning of this meeting, a very student voice IEP. So if you look at, for example, you know, before it used to say parent and/or student concerns, now it is student and parent concerns. Um, student strengths and the key evaluations used to be all in the very front section of the IEP where now they are distributed across. Um, accommodations used to take place on what we used to lovingly call the PLEP A and PLEP B pages. Where now there are four present levels of performance, which are those additional pages to the IEP. For our students who are fourteen and over, we used to talk about transition planning. And it was a separate form that was kind of like staple to the end of the IEP, where now it is integrated into the IEP. Um, there is baseline data as an integral part of the new IEP format. Um, instead of non-participation in general education and justifying why that happens, the participation in general education is described. And students who needed extended school year programming, it was built right into the service delivery grid of the IEP, whereas now it has its own. So it's much cleaner and able for parents to look at and say, when my student is in school, September through June, this is what they're receiving. And if my student has summer programming, here it is over here and here's what it looks like. So it's a much cleaner version of the IEP and much more understandable.
Yeah, that was a very confusing way that grid was seen.
Yes.
Mr. Wong, is this, is this state prescribed or is this something we did on our own?
No, this is, in terms of what?
The forms.
The forms.
So the, the new IEP forms are state.
So the old one though, is that year two thousand and one?
That's when it came out.
We have not updated that as a state in twenty-four years?
That's correct.
Twenty-three.
Oh, sorry. I didn't, are you kidding me? Wow. That's, that's
What will happen to students who are on an IEP currently saying that maybe they just had their annual review? How is that transition going to happen between, or when do you expect to roll out all of the new IEP forms and what happens to to someone who's actually very new on an IEP? And won't be on a new one for three years?
So the, the content of the IEP is not changing. It's the formatting that is changing. And they're changing kind of the lens of it a little bit in the formatting of it. But as IEPs come up and those annual reviews or reevaluation meetings come up, that is when the shift comes to the new IEP.
As of what date?
So we are
This year?
We are rolling out the new IEP starting on the first day of school next year.
Okay, alright.
Yep. It, but we're not obviously rolling out all of the IEPs for all of the students on the first day of school next year.
Right.
We are taking them as those
As those come up starting September third.
Third or whenever.
Or fourth, twenty twenty-four. Okay.
Whenever it may be. What we do have, um, and it is, I, I think I've alluded this to, to this before, we have a training this summer with Alan Bloom, who is kind of the guru of IEPs coming to Cohasset and providing a training for all of our special educators in the new IEP. But the other exciting thing that we have is that um, I reached out to um, Deputy Commissioner Russell Johnston um, this week because I know that he, you know, spoke on the new IEP at the training that I went to. I've heard that he is doing some speaking and visiting in districts. And um, he through his secretary, reached back out to me and said that he would be happy to come and speak to the special educators this May on the new IEP. And um, tomorrow in CPAC, I will be sharing that and would like to invite the CPAC board to um, join us when Commissioner Johnston comes out and speaks to us. It's about an hour presentation on the new IEP that he shares. So I'm thrilled that he's going to come to our district.
He's good.
Any other questions for the committee?
Um, first, I think it's a great idea. Anytime you can get uh, state leadership in and have a direct relationship. Possession is nine tenths of the law. That's great. You know, have a relationship with them. Are you at all concerned in the shift from parent to student? And student to parent? I'll give you an example. My son was on an IEP. He has a PhD in hiding in plain sight. It takes a long time to figure it out. Are you at all concerned the self-identifying role of a student early in the process? Am I reading that correctly? That there's a new focus in the new IEP that students advocate for themselves early? And the are you concerned of not finding students in a finally matter?
No, not at all, because that, it, that's not the venue through which we find students.
Okay.
What that really does is that enables them to have some ownership of their learning.
Yep.
And there are actually guiding questions depending upon the age of the student
Yep.
that the state has put out where you talk to the student about, you know, what do you see as your strengths if they're very little? What things are you good at? What do you like to do?
Okay.
Um, and then what are the things that are challenging for you? What is, what's hard? What don't you like? Um, and there's a set of guiding questions that helps the student self-identify as a learner, take real ownership of themselves and understanding of themselves as learners, and that helps them be better.
That's great.
Yeah.
I, I should also say my son is studying economics and finance at UMass. He's doing great.
Nice.
He is, um, if he had not been disrupted in the third grade with an IEP, he probably wouldn't be there. So.
Wonderful. It's great.
Mr. Chair, before we move on to students, can I just bring up something that I, I, I'm going to go to CPAC tomorrow? And I've been, I feel like I've been talking about this, talking about this for, for a year. Can we, when Mr. Wong presents, can we invite a liaison from CPAC to attend the school committee at the same time? They want to do it.
Yes.
I want to be able to like formally, if the school committee is on board, I want to formally invite them to figure out their nominee every other meeting with Mr. Wong so that there's some continuity there. Is everyone on board with that?
I will tell you that uh, I will get for the next presentation, Ms. Wong, I have the invitation. So if you're wanting to be meeting, ask them to have an offer.
Great. Thank you, guys.
I'll save the chair for him.
I'm going to stop the chair. Great.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Wong. Um, and next bullet point, our teaching learning academic initiatives updates with Dr. Leslie Collins.
So I'm just going to give you a list of things, no slides, just going to kind of go through some of the highlights. Um, there's so much going on. I think when January hits, this is when things start moving really, really fast um, in, in schools. Students have their routines in place, things are going on. So um, our curriculum mapping continues. Um, and that's under the director, the direction of Robert Roberts, our Director of Data Evaluation and Curriculum. He is working closely with teachers. He has set up an elementary meeting, so they're going to meet all day on Friday. We just have a core group of teachers that are working on it, which is wonderful. Um, we have a few middle school, high school and um, leaders and as well as educators who have participated in the restorative justice training through Metco. That just finished up for our leaders. Our teachers will be following suit. And, and we received a grant for that also. So we were part of a grant and then we also have additional monies to buy some resources. So um, they're going to be coming up with a plan and we'll be sharing that with you in the late spring around our next steps for uh, growing the, that practice. Restorative justice is a way of um, setting up a classroom so that, and a school community so that there are um levers in place when students to learn to communicate with each other, how to be um, inclusive, how to make sure that uh, they're equitable and that what they're doing, they're accountable for. So what I know Dr. Sullivan's talked about around those tenants of, of Castle, right? Make sure they're good decision makers, making sure that we're making good choices, all of those pieces, which aligns with our um, responsive classroom, which is at the elementary level. So there's a direct line with that. Um, so that's exciting and um, and has been a good experience. Um, our winter assessments already mentioned, um, they have, are almost complete. We have some stragglers here and there, um, but those family reports will be available in Aspen, both the um, iReady and Dibbles, which we weren't able to do before, but now we have systems that we can do it. So those reports will be available in Aspen for families. So they will not be getting paper. If you want paper, we can always print it out, but um, it'll be available in Aspen on the fifteenth of February. So I think that'll be nice for families. And principals will reach out too to remind people. Um, Monday, we had um, our Committee for Dyslexia Screening in the process. He's on that committee. So um, we are looking at our process and how do we, you know, making sure that we stay with the regs, but we have to rewrite our, our, uh, our plan. So that's what we'll do and we'll be sharing that at the end of the year when that is complete. But um, we are doing things along the way to adhere to what the new law says. But our plan doesn't say that, so we're writing it as, as we go. So we'll have a complete plan. Um, because there are some things that we want to make sure that we're doing um, properly and things that we've tried out. For example, kindergarten, I already talked about it. We tested them in the beginning there with everyone else. Talking to other districts, everyone's moving it to a later date. They're just so young. Um, and so those are the things that we're looking at. Um, and our pre-K professional development, they were in Plymouth. I mentioned that before. Um, that is um, a coordination with Plymouth Public Schools, Duxbury and Hingham. And so they spent their afternoon together on a Friday. And what they're doing in this next round in the spring is they're writing a unit together. They'll try that out and then we'll continue. It's been really successful, so I would anticipate um, that these districts will all, will all work together too, because we, all the districts have just a few, you know, just a couple of teachers. So um, it's been really wonderful. Um, and I think that's it. There's more, but let's stick with that.
Thank you, Derek Stones. Um, with that, we'll move into JMF Budget Resource Governance. Um, we're going to start off, this should have a, ask for some of that. That's, that's my fault, but the um, we have a gift from the Cohasset Parent School organization, the PSO. Um, I guess, so on our um, Derek Stones, other one we'll walk through this gift. It's included in materials under exhibit F1.
The PSO did um, gift us a check and they wanted eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Um, it was broken down by each school. So each school received some um, some piece of the money, you know, provided for or asked for, and this is probably the check. Um, at Asgood, it was from some, some books they were looking for and some art materials. Deer Hill was um, also some books and some um, physical education materials, malls, middle school, um, under a grant, under this grant, asked for a few Red Cat Systems. So separate from the ones that were asking for capitals, um, this was kind of like the feeding of it to get it started. And then the high school, um, is also looking for some books. So the, thank you very much to PSO for again donating money to us. And if there's any questions, we can try to answer them. If not, we need a vote to accept the gift.
Any questions for the committee?
We need to accept the gift.
I, I just want to circle back to the letter of appreciation that we were all talking about. I'm hoping that maybe we can come up with something next week or next meeting. To kind of just, we've been talking about it for years. Just, I know this is a specific
I'll drop it from, send it to the, send it to the chair.
Good. Just thanking from all of us, any
They can change if they want to change. We'll have it done, which needs to be a letter that we have on it. We talked about it. I'll do it.
As we're going. So uh, and, and also in addition to a wonderful letter of appreciation, I also do want to express appreciation to the PSO for their continued support of our schools. We are a better school district because of them and uh, very much appreciate this gift and all that they, all they do. Uh, with that, do we have a motion to accept the gift from the PSO?
Move.
Motion made by Mr. McCollum. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carr. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Alright. Great. Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Owen, please apply this, these proceeds as directed by the
To the PSO.
PSO. Um, so that ends the good part of the budget presentation. And now we're going to talk about spending the money.
Do you want to be a co-host?
So
Yeah.
Um, Ms. Owen, I'll turn it over to you for a pair of presentations, first on the budget, second on the capital. Um, as an initial matter, I just kind of learned this myself. Budget is our operating budget, what we spend every year, capitalists. Investments into the schools that are outside of that budget. So things that we need additional funding for. Uh, by and large, those are the cases. Um, and, and that, that stage will come through. So uh, with that, Ms. Owen, uh, I will ask you to um, take it away. But before I, before I do, this is not something that at this point the committee is voting on at this point.
No.
So this is a for information, feedback.
This is just an update, um, a spin-off of our school workshop that we had for anyone that who, who hasn't, who wasn't at the workshop. Um, this is just uh, what, what our current questions are. So we talked about the, the budget priorities. You can see they haven't, they haven't changed. You know, we added um, social studies, six, uh, five to twelve and science, six through eight um, to the teaching and learning. Uh, the rest of the bullet points have fallen along with our strategic plan. To start off, um, our FY twenty-four appropriated budget is To start off, our FY twenty-four appropriated budget is, was twenty-two thousand nine hundred five four hundred twenty-one dollars. Our contractual salary obligations are a little over a million dollars, which is a four point five two percent increase. If you remember, this is the third year, this will be going into the third year of most of our contracts, our contracts. And the town administrator had assured us through meetings that we would have, the town would have more revenue in the third year. So this is a three percent across the board to most of our buying units. So it's, it's the highest, highest increase over the last three years. So, well unsettling to see, just coming out of the gate, we're looking for a million, which is a four point five two. We also had the depressing news that we had a decrease in circuit breaker by a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So we have to make up that difference. We then had an increase in special education tuitions from this year to next year, name on a four hundred and four thousand. Which that I think Barbara and I are working on, cause that may be going up. We just found out there. Instead of a two and a half percent increase to some of our tuition, they're looking at four point seven, seven. So private, private schools going up again. So that number will change. And then our, you know, we have some retirements that we're projecting the savings of kind of eighty thousand dollars. Which, which is, our ask is for just, just a basic role of a cost to, to get out of the gate is one point three million. It's a six point one percent increase, which is high.
That's not any addition.
That's just to go.
As you know, the, the primary driver of this is that three percent increase in the. So, and, and we, we previewed that that is a, and we've known, and we've previewed that with the, that is a, that will be a big burden for our district. So this is, this is where we are.
The next slide are staffing or other requests. You can see, we had, we had many and we've vetted them out through lots of leadership meetings. But from a student service perspective, they're looking to increase an occupational therapist from point eight to one point oh for the small high school. It's an amount of fourteen thousand dollars. As Mr. Marka spoke, we're looking to add a school adjustment counselor. Currently, we have a split between two schools. So.
That, that would solve that problem. Sorry, that would solve that problem that we talked about before, adding two?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm glad that's in there.
The, you know, increase in utility, utilities budget, we haven't had an increase in years. And obviously utility costs go up every year. This year, I find that we're either gonna break even or be close to a slight deficit. So I'm looking to increase by fifteen thousand dollars. I'm, we are looking to increase the custodial supplies materials budget in the amount of twenty thousand dollars over the course of the last few years. A lot of it COVID, COVID driven. We've had to purchase all, all kinds of updated, upgraded, touchless hand sanitizers. And we've also taken on all the landscaping responsibilities and, and have to maintain the equipment and purchase additional supplies, materials to cover our additional responsibilities. And then very minimal, last year we had two hundred seventy-two thousand dollar ask for my department heads. This year it's, it's forty-four thousand seven thirteen. So it, you know, it's very, very minimal. And then the additional chapter seventy funding of three hundred thousand dollars. We had one time funding awarded to us from the town for, to fund full day kindergarten this year. Based on the fact that we would be doubling our enrollment, so when we reported to the state, our chapter seventy funding would increase by approximately five hundred eighty thousand dollars. And then the school would get a percentage of that, which would make up this three hundred thousand dollars. I just, this is here, cause I want it on the radar. It's kind of logistics of how it's gonna come to us, but it's here. So the additional recommendations are to increase our staffing by one point two. And that increase is four hundred fifty-nine thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars, which is a two percent.
So it's technically an increase, but it's a, it's a pre-agreed increase.
Correct. But, okay, so I, I want it out there visible.
Right. So you're adding, so, but it's a, it's like a net, like a hundred ninety thousand, a hundred sixty thousand dollars. And over and above that.
Yes.
When you add positions, are you also then increasing benefits cost to, is this just salary or does that include the entire package? Okay. And so there will also be when we add positions, an additional cost in terms of insurance, retirement, et cetera. Where does that get reflected?
The, the town pays for it.
Okay.
We end up paying it back. So when you see our, when you see the, the cherry sheets and the actual annual report, you'll see what's charged back to the schools.
So I don't think I would just ask these questions, so let's just use the line items that's, it's, it's on the sheets. So we have, we have a request to add school adjustment counselor, elementary sixty-six thousand dollars. But that's not the true cost. True cost is only sixty-six thousand dollars plus cost of benefits, insurance and life. Which the town pays, but then we pay back. So that's a, you know, it's sixty thousand dollars plus X. Where is the X reflected in our budget?
It's not. It, it comes out of, it comes out of the chapter, the chapter seventy, kind of a bucket of money that the town has. And it divides it up amongst the different departments. So you'll see it on like our end of year report. It will show you everything that's come out, like our retirement, all kinds.
So is the funding for this, what I'm hearing, is the funding for those special, those benefits, those extra costs are already accounted for somewhere else in the nexus of the municipal financing. So we do not need to do lots, spell it out specifically on other. Great question.
And for, you know, the ad here, that the point to increase that present is already. So just give them, it would be the one person. So this is the summary of what the rule of costs are, what the additional recommendations are. And our, our total ask is one point eight five five eight seven five, which is a very large ask. It comes out to about eight point one percent increase over the current budget.
So and, and can, for the future presentations, we ask that you do break that out, one with the three hundred thousand without. Cause the, the eight point one is a little inflated, given that the three hundred thousand is pre-agreed. So that's not really part of our baseline. And next year I would say that already being in our budgets, we won't say this against this, especially here. So I just think it feels like we're asking for more than we really are, the three hundred thousand is. Kind of came from the state, so that should, that should be in there.
Yes. It's still going to make a, a bottom line number.
Yeah, no, exactly. I think, I think for, for purposes of discussing it with, with the town, with the various boards, I think we should make it clear that, that we're not actually asking for eight point one percent new funds. Then of that eight point one percent, three hundred thousand is stuff that's already prefunded by chapter seventy funding coming to the state. We've already talked, that should be coming to us anyway. So I, I just don't want this to be demerited and called spinfruits. Because we're, I have a, a, a five hundred thousand dollars for the town. This car.
Is there an appeal process to a decrease in circuit breaker? It's like a big number.
No. So it's, it's, it's. It, it is a decrease for us in, it's not the same as it was the prior year. But what it really means is that, like, no matter what our circuit breaker number is, seventy-five percent of it gets back. So the number, the original number for circuit breaker was lower.
That's why the hundred and twenty thousand difference.
So we claimed, we claimed less because we had less to claim.
Because we have left, okay, that's what I wanted to know. I didn't know if this was a state.
So it's based on what you claim. So I, we claimed less, so we get.
I think we, we should think sooner rather than, this is a very challenging number. Including, we should think maybe about talking to the state about some funding. In some way, I don't know how to do that yet, but I think this is a number we need to probably get our arms around pretty quick.
Ms. Owen, either you or, or finance subcommittee have interfaced with the town at all on what projected budget availability would be and whether or not this is a non-starter, a possible feasibility or. Yeah, no problem. We just had tons and tons and tons of car registrations last year, so we're flush with cash.
Our number has not come out yet. And I know they're still in transition, should say, with the new town accountant. The old town accountant has been coming in on Tuesdays to kind of get, get her up to speed. So I think that will be coming soon, cause I, I've been working with the assistant town manager on other items and asks. So I think they're working on it. She was talking about free cash and what, what funding we've used and what funding we haven't used. So I mean, I think they're in the midst of trying to come up with some numbers now. I mean, it's usually typically in February that we hear.
I would just, I could add just one thing to this conversation, cause we're talking about the cap, the, the budget itself, not the capital. This, this is the overall, people that we rely on every day to run our schools. The one thing that I noticed that we don't have that we share with the town is facilities director, facilities manager. And I think it's, it's quite apparent that we don't have one. We're, we're, we're splitting one with town. So as we look at these budgets, I think it, it, it might come up in the next slide. But I think we gotta look at the facilities director. I think we're the only school district that doesn't have. I know Susan's taken on that role, which is basically two jobs in one. And we did that four years ago when we first started. And, and we combined the facilities and the finances. I think we have to make a, a, a look, and we'll bring this up later with Jason, of how we can look at the facilities, right? Like, we don't have anybody really going out there getting these bids that are, cause we're splitting it with the town. So I think that's, we've gotta kind of look at that maybe next year or. But I think it should be in a conversation with facilities director, that their job is just the schools. Cause what we have, Nick is a town employee, doesn't represent, he represents a school, but the town too. So he's, it, it, it's a lot of overbearing and I'm seeing a lot of, as a committee member that's been on the finance facilities community for four or five years, I'm seeing that a lot of this isn't getting done because it's, we don't have enough support for the buildings. I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. So when we're thinking about staffing, I think we should maybe talk about a facilities director in the next upcoming buckets. Sorry to interrupt, this is a very good point. Is the, is there just, is there maybe more resources at the town level from a facilities capability? Maybe we don't have enough of this? That possible? I, and, and again, this could lead right into the, that, that capital that we're talking about. And there's, there's a couple of different ways to do it, right? Like, if you were to do a construction project for, for a big end company, they would hire an owner's agent, right? We can bring that up. Where we give them a specific task that we'll talk about later, but like getting the fences done, getting this done. Like, this office is way too over, overextended to do that kind of work.
This is, this is an untenable figure right here. You're talking about adding another, another FD.
I'm just talking about getting things done. And, and I can tell, I can just tell you this, like, it's either this side of the budget or that side of the budget. When I say that side of the budget, that would be the, that would be the capital, right? So instead of hiring a facilities director, maybe you wanna look at an owner's agent.
This is not, this is not the agenda item of.
It's gonna come up. I'll just wait to the next slide.
Well, I do wanna go for the budget process itself. Whether or not we have any facilities, I think a director should be a recommendation coming from the administration. And so I think we should engage them on whether, on whether and how to do that. I don't, I don't think that it would be the best use of our time right now to do a free form discussion.
No, I get it. I'm just throwing it out there.
And, and this is not to say that I don't share your concern.
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there.
Trying to, and, and Mr. McCullen is, and channeling some of my anxiety as well. I'm worried right now about this number and I, I wanna focus on how we can accomplish this number. And talk about adding stuff, I think is, is. Ms. Owen, if you don't mind.
So I just wanted to show the community and talk to many, these were our staffing and other requests that we considered. That might have been on the list and we took off the list. So we didn't put it forth. There was originally an ask for to increase our ELL from a point five to a one point oh. We talked about adding a grade four teacher based on enrollment. Since conversations, the downhill principal feels that the numbers are sustainable. She doesn't, she doesn't need that grade four teacher this year. The technology department asked for a new IT person district wide. And then there was some switch, switching off of conversation was, right now our technology, the elementary levels are taken care of by ESPs and we were looking to either get those ESPs certified to be a teacher and bring them in at the teaching level or to seek out technology teacher at the Osco to the technology teacher. And then you can see in the future, and Mrs. Swonka spoke about the adding of the special education kindergarten teacher. We talked about adding a library meeting specialist at Deer Hill, cause we currently don't have one, we have an ESP in that role. So those are some of the, so those are some of the asks or wants that we, we talked through and felt that we didn't have to put on the list for next year. But you will see on our projections, on positions for the next five years, they are, they are on it. The budget worksheet that we've, we've seen, you can, you can, it just outlines everything we just talked about in slides.
I, I will note that one of the line items here is an increase in sped tuition of four hundred and four thousand, which is in that. Have we discussed accessing our stabilization, our special education stabilization fund?
I've had several conversations with assistant town manager about utilizing it. And as early as, as late as this morning, I sent another email saying, we are requesting to draw from our special stabilization fund because we're, we're in deficit. Not even looking at this, but currently for the month of January, our deficit of five fifty-four has now raised to like five eighty for this year. We did have.
What's the, what's the current balance of our special education stabilization fund?
The last time I taught too, the town accountant was at two seventy-nine. So whatever we take, and that's the second part of it that I reached out to the town about was, you know, the process of asking to replenish. It's to be done at the town meeting. It comes with free cash.
It definitely shouldn't be replenished. The other thing is we, we are, the relief programs that are coming through circuit breaker this year have been pushed up. They are coming earlier than they typically come. So that may give us an earlier understanding of if we need to go to stabilization fund, how much we may need to go to stabilization fund, because some of that may come in in time for us to know that.
But if I'm hearing this correctly, we've got two issues right now. Currently, we're five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the red for, versus budget for special education. And we're, we're projecting and requesting for next year a four hundred and four thousand dollar increase. So we are, we have, we have a million dollar hole. Right?
Well, I mean, you're looking at both years, but you're looking at both years.
We need five hundred thousand now, maybe four thousand next year. We don't have either one of them.
Well, that, correct. So the minus five now is gonna roll into next year. We've had some savings. So it won't be minus five hundred thousand, it will be minus four hundred thousand. So yes, you're correct. Cause it's gonna, it's gonna continue into the next year.
Right. But using the stable, accessing the stabilization fund, right, special education, and then in hopes of also getting that additional money. But again, it's on our hands right now.
So last year, I think the extraordinary relief we got was about two hundred. We got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if we get an additional two hundred fifty thousand dollars this year, the extra, extraordinary relief, will, will, the state says we have to spend it this year.
Right.
So that will make the, this year's minus five eighty less.
By two hundred and fifty thousand.
And we're just basing that on what we got. Obviously, obviously, all of those numbers were very different than the numbers we had this year because. It was completely different here.
But that's an area we should have a, maybe a conversation with legislators. I mean, I just think that, you know, things like that. That's an area that we might be able to.
I mean, part of, part of it is last, last year coming into this year, the, the increase to private was fourteen percent tuition. And privates are most, uh, the highest. Uh, our highest tuition out there. Um, and they increased it by fourteen percent, so.
And that is why we have two relief packages through circuit breaker this year to help address some of that. But you know, we're also just hearing that they are, they are the ones who are increasing again.
What, what's the approximate date of the reimbursement for circuit break? When does it usually come in?
So the extraordinary relief will come in in May, or they came in in May before, but now. It will come in before the end of this year and has to be used for this. The, the relief. But the other ones come in.
Last year, last year, we will get them till October. And these are some slides on M C S that we shared at our workshop. I don't know, Leslie, if you want to speak to them.
Yeah, just really talking about the fact that we have, um, had a focus on, um. You know, what's been going on over the past few years? You know, are we making strides post COVID? And two of our schools, um, both Coast High School and Deer Hill are two of the sixty-six schools that were recognized by the state. Um, you can see that, um, in terms of many exceeding expectations, hence why M C S scores. Um, were among the highest in the state. Um, E L A fifth, math seventeen, science fourteen. So, um, just some, some, so everything that you are doing to support. Schools is working. Um, and so, um, we just want to share that because it's important to know that, that. That those things are happening. Um, grade six through eight, their achievement scores, you can see, I won't read it at all, but you can see, um, we, we're, we're either. At or above where we were, um, when we started. So our achievements and our growth is high.
Again, just caught us at a time. I'm going to micromanage a little bit more than I normally do. Um, if we can just, I think, I think there's a few points of this and I believe this is available online for those who want to. Page eleven, uh, would be the request. Kind of talk, talk about that a little bit. And then, um, it looks like we have on page, the page of right before the middle school, we got a budget request for the, um. Increase of a half adjustment council one point oh, that is that on the.
It's on this slide right here.
That's, yeah, that's the one we spoke about.
The adjustment counselor.
And there's one.
And the increase from O T for the O T. Both on this page because they're both coming from student services. So we've talked about these.
But the schools all also echoed it. I think that's what you're seeing there. Right. So the principal supported the fact that we wanted the one point oh. So it looks like it may be on there twice, but it's not.
Yeah, correct. So. The schools themselves did not advocate for any.
No, nothing from the middle school and, um, no, no additional positions from the high school.
We have, uh, dear hill, page eighteen.
That's that same. They're just, the schools are just showing their support. Yes.
So then nothing from the.
Nothing from middle and nothing from high school around additional positions.
And then you can see, well, if you can see it, um, this is the projections going out, um, on what positions we're looking for over the next. Four or five years.
So some of those things that you saw that we redlined, we've moved out, knowing full out the budget is going to look like.
Um, and this is just a slide of what, you know, what our future budget goals are, you know, what I want to.
Questions on budget, Mr. Carr?
You made the need, um, you recall any ask to C P C this year and you remember what they're for?
C P C this year.
Any other comments, questions in the committee?
Have we considered a spending freeze?
Yes, that was one of the questions, um, that I, I wanted to talk to. Um, first, Dr. Fall, to see if that's what we're looking at. Um, I did.
That is what we're looking at. I can tell you, that's, that's actually our decision and it's what we're looking at. We're in trouble. It's a bad situation.
Um, and I also have, um. I've done crunching numbers. I don't have them with me right now on, you know, they asked all the departments to cut by five percent, seven percent, ten percent. What would the savings be? So I can share that at the next meeting too.
Yeah, I, I, I do think that's.
That, that would be good to know.
That's in the cards. I, I think we, we are, this is going to be the least fun budget process that I think we've had.
You know, as far as the, I'm sorry.
We, we, we have shared anxiety, you have before, sir.
You know, I think that the faculty will be, uh, should be amenable to trying to make some cuts because, um, you know. I'm not going to say that, you know, we're retiring this position because of the negotiations, but. You know, we, we, we did everything we could just, just to, to really, you know, stretch. To make sure that we're, we're doing every, and then everything we, we can for our, for our educators, our talented educators and the people that make this district what it is. Um, so, you know, money well spent, but I think that now we need to start making some really, uh, I think some, some difficult financial decisions. To make that a more reality. This is a, this is a, I, I, I don't. And this is a red alert situation because, because that. Forward operating figure alone is bigger than we usually get, but the town can't afford it. So. I, so, so Mr. Carr, I'm going to partner with you. We, we need to, we need to try and get, I, there, there is, there is money there. Uh, the governor is very pro education. We, 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 we have to be able to get some, some money, some emergency one time thing from the state somehow. There has to be something.
The one time thing isn't going to solve it. This is chronic.
Sure, but then we can at least, I, I, I agree, but, but we need, look, we have to get advantage before we're, you know, brought to.
We're asking the state for funding, but I think the ask is first ongoing, continuing funding, then. One time so that we can try and figure out how we stop the bleeding. But there's an important variable that we're, I mean, I share your anxiety. I have it a lot. Uh, but there's an important variable that we don't have answers to yet, and that is what the town's available resources are. I have no insight at this point into what their budget situation looks like, what their legislative fund is, what their growth in revenue, production of revenue. Um, I just don't know. I don't know if anybody, anybody here does.
We know we just went through a town meeting where we approved, we approved all kinds of infrastructure improvements. And that's, I mean, that's, that's not something that I think was anticipated when the town manager came to our negotiations for the, uh, the. Contracts, uh, and, uh, so any, any gain in revenue would be offset. Uh, more than offset by all of these decisions that, which is, which is a good thing for the town. These are all good things, but the problem is that, so I, I do have some idea. I mean, I know that that's, that's not a good thing.
Some of those were debt financed, some of those overrides and those. Funds, tax increases. So again, I, I don't, I don't think we have the full picture. Mr. Carr, you.
I just, I think that the town is going to have some unexpected significant costs, like the town hall thing and other things like that. So I think the access to capital is going to be very difficult. And the only other thing I don't fully understand is I think the one time cost can be solved in unique ways. But I think any additional long-term cost has to either be an override or done with the town's consent. I don't recall that exactly, but I think going to the legislature for added money, just for the schools for multiple years, I think is challenging. Doesn't mean we can't ask. The good news is we will all figure this out together. That's the good news because that's what we get paid the big bucks for.
Yeah, uh, maybe if we stopped getting paid the big bucks, it would, uh, help the budget.
Right. You want to take a salary cut.
I'll do a hundred percent. Um, of my school committee's salary, uh, just to be clear. Um, I still have to pay a mortgage. So I, I, I think what you're, um, Ms. Owen and, and Dr. Collins, I think what you're hearing from this committee is, is a little bit of anxiety about what the numbers look like. I mean, the, the, the rollover costs on staffing were anticipated. Uh, I, they were premised on a few things that may or may not have been realized on the town's budget. So, uh, those conversations need to be had. I do think it is a worthwhile endeavor for us to look at. You know, the possibility of a spending freeze plus the areas that we can. Find savings, uh, at, at, at the schools. Um, you know, certain things like heating the schools is probably a non-negotiable item, but, um, there, there are things that we've. Even hard, hard fought things that we have tried to build out, we may have to make hard decisions on, given what we're looking at here, what we're looking at. Projected town financial.
Understood. I mean, and we, we had a last, um, I think it was at the workshop, actually, we asked them to, we asked them. To, um, make the not so much list of what, if we had to look at something, what, what would they, what would they give up? So, um, they're prepared to share it, uh, probably at a, I'll ask at a next leadership meeting, and then I can also share. Um, what it looked like when we said, all right, for all the departments, you know, if we cut five, ten percent, what, what, what would the savings be?
Uh, if, if you were zeroing in on a number. Eight point one less three hundred grand is a, is a, is a, is a number.
You gotta be honest, there's not a lot of room there, to be honest. You have your fixed costs about that, that's already been negotiated with the teachers and the unions. You got supplies that you need. So like this, this, this really not a lot of fat in this budget. I've been on this the last five years and I've seen it. And, and to be quite honest with you, like, going forward in the future, yeah, we gotta, we gotta look. For cuts, but we also gotta look for revenues. You know, this town is continuing to raise taxes. I mean, my taxes got raised. Um, and we just got to make that argument that it's worth the investment. Kids are worth the investment. So like, I don't want to have this, I don't want to have this scared anxiety that we can't afford anything. You, you remember, remember where we're at. You know, these are our kids' programs, so. If I, I, I don't see us, I, I really don't see a lot of cuts other than. Um, I just see additions that we are, I, I fully feel like we are underfunded. It's the school. Twenty million dollars seems like a lot of money. I mean, we got baseball players making that. We're, you know, fourteen hundred kids. So when you do the numbers, you know, we can pay for it now, pay for it later. We, we gotta realize that we have to keep to the standards that we have now. We have to. We can't expect teachers to take hit salary cuts when, in, in fact, I don't think we pay them enough. That's my personal opinion, but I, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to see us committee members paranoid that we're not going to be able to get there. I do understand that there should be a flag out there, but I think we should look at other, um, uh, means to. Help with the budget. That might be voluntary, like you just mentioned. None of us are getting it. I'm sure there's people out there that might be able to take a librarian job for, for no pay, you know? So I think we gotta look out there and have this as a community discussion than just saying, hey, we're just going to cut costs, just to cut costs.
And Ms. Ms. Kenny, I definitely appreciate that perspective. Um, and we should, we should think about that. The, the options that we have from a pure numbers perspective are. Reduce or find new revenue. And the only available place for us to find revenue are new taxes. We just asked our town for one of that million dollars a year in the stabilization fund to help us fund our facilities. The question is, what's the taxpayer appetite or more? Kingham is going through this right now and they're furious. So we, we are at the ability, when, not the when. We're at the mercy of our town's ability and willingness to support the schools. Um, and we've already asked a lot from our, our townspeople. So. I don't know how viable asking for more would be from a taxpayer perspective. It's something we should think about as a community, but. We should also explore what we can do with what we have available. So I had a thousand percent on board with everything you said. My anxiety comes from the reality of it.
Chair, I'm sorry to do this. It's sort of, uh, an ambush, but I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned. I think that it's, it would be irresponsible of us not to act right now. Um, I, 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 I don't know. I, I have much to blame as anyone else, but I, 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 I would make a motion for a spending freeze right now. I don't know if it'll pass. I don't know if it'll be seconded, but I'm making a motion for a spending freeze. Offer a spending freeze right now.
You, you, to be honest with you, like, I don't, I don't. I, I would ask that we get to a subcommittee and be able to look at it, subcommittee to be able to get some. I don't think that would be just flying out of the air saying we're going to do a spending freeze. I, I, I just, I understand what you're saying, Greg. I respect that. I know, I get that, but I'm just asking.
There is a motion on the table. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Can you just talk a little bit more about, for me at least, um, like what that would entail? Does that mean stop spending right now? Or does that mean stop spending for next year? And so, so what the, what the sort of realities of that would be day to day life?
It would be no, it would be no. I mean, we did it last year, um. Probably February, March, year, we are just to slow things down a little bit. Um, so we, you know, we had a spending freeze, but allowed. Um, just the absolute necessity. And if they didn't, you know, we looked at it as, you know, if you bash for it. For September first and it's still sitting there in February, you didn't really need it. Um, except, you know, there's, there's certain circumstances, like art materials can't sit, right, for six or eight months. They have to order as, as they need. So, but it would, it would stop every, everything.
How much did you cover last year? What was the freeze? What was the percentage? Was there a percentage or just no spend?
So you did that without a vote?
That was on, no, that was on Susan's recommendation.
I think she just did it.
Yes, my, my opinion, I think, is the administration should have the opportunity to go and talk about it. But I think this is a real thing we should consider.
Right. And we also, we also got to consider, if we're going to really, the reality is that. Do we really think we're going to get a hundred and forty million dollar new school? Seriously? No, I get that, but let me finish my point, please, Mr. Carr. If we're going to talk, like have, like serious conversations, spend a four hundred thousand dollars just to see what we're going to do the next year. And spending, that's a couple, that's four hundred thousand dollars on, what are we going to do?
Here, we can come back to that. So I want to focus our discussion on that.
I think that should be on the agenda and then make a motion. I don't know how we can just make motions. I can make a motion now.
But once this motion is up, you can make a motion for this.
I think it should be on the agenda and then talk about it.
So it sounds like we don't have support for the motion from, from Mr. Kenny. Any other committee member wants to, um, speak about the motion? So I will request if there's a second. Hearing none, motion is not seconded, the motion does not go to a vote. So, um. So now the motion is closed. Now, Mr. Kenny, uh, I'll give you back the floor.
Thank you. Uh, like you said, I think we could have a serious discussion about how are we going to fix our schools? If it's a hundred and forty million dollars, give us a number. If you can't get to the number, if you don't have community support. Then we should start fixing the school now. The idea that I've sat in a, a committee for three years and we haven't done anything other than talked about buying a new school or getting a new school. And we're sitting in there just having a conversation about not ordering school supplies. I think we gotta have really a reality conversation with them, right? If you're going to say to us, our taxes is going to go this high. And then we can't, oh, great, we have new schools, but we can't fund our teachers, which has happened in other communities. They build these. Monstrosity schools. Yeah, they're beautiful, but they can't fund them. So I think we need to have a conversation of like, what are we going to do there? Are we going to fix what we have or are we not going to fix what we have? And that has to be a plan A or plan B. But moving forward, I think that's before, you know, I wouldn't want to see us build a new school and then cut a special needs, uh. Uh, elementary school, uh, excuse me, uh, adjustment council. I, I wouldn't want to see that. That's just not a way to spend the money. So I don't mind sitting in a hot classroom. I, I don't like that idea. However, if, if we don't have a teacher there, then I'm concerned. So I am concerned about the budget, but I am concerned about. How are we going to fix this, th- these buildings up at, at the same tone? So I think we gotta kind of look at both.
And, and actually, that's a, that's a good segue into the capital presentation. I do want to, um, build on the sentiment behind, uh, Mr. Collins' motion. I would, I would like to get the administration's. I would, I would like to get the administration's views on
Yeah.
on whatever you have to pull, whether or not a spending freeze would be appropriate and have that prepared for the.
Yeah, I think that's very reasonable. Thank you.
And, and like I said, I, I mean, honestly, I'd like to have the conversation with Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollons as early as Monday. And as early as Monday, I'd like to freeze off.
It's just, but there's, there's a couple of different things that happened. I mean, you do, you, you do run finance and operations, so you, you control the person's, okay, of the school. But I do think we want your recommendation from a committee perspective, whether, whether or not to do that as well. So I appreciate that. Any other questions on this happy agenda item of our, our fiscal year 25 budget?
I have another question.
Slusky.
Sorry. Who or how or both? Our looks at, when we're talking about supplies and materials, any sort of redundancies that kind of come through where perhaps the English department has ordered X number of composition books, but the history department also needs them. And they each have eight extras. And so that we're, we're sort of creating some redundancies, like these are, these aren't going to be big tickets solving this budget problem. But probably in a small way, if we're not looking at where those redundancies lie in some of the, the consumables. Is that happening?
It does happen. Each, each department submits a budget worksheet that Dr. Scollons and Dr. Sullivan and I go through with the leadership team. And we go through line by line on what each department is asking for. So it, you know, it's a collaborative effort with a solid room. So, you know, what Leslie may know that, like you said, there's too many books in one area and not enough in the other, or there's redundancy. So we do go over the budgets, worksheets each year, which you've already done this year. And it's like I said, it's slim. I mean, the increase this year was 40, 44,000.
Those are the things we, yeah, I think we need, you know, to your point, I think, you know, it always, we can always go back and look and see again, especially if we're gonna be thinking about that reduction in the five, six, seven percent. It's like, if we're gonna, we're gonna do that anyway. So it gives us a good idea to do that. But the principals manage that too on a yearly basis.
Right. I think it would be helpful for me personally to sort of see that supplies and material budget put out to supplies and textbooks and teaching materials, that those are sort of two separate things. And I think as parents, we're asked to provide our kids with a lot of the stuff that I think we happily do. And to sort of really be careful in that area, and maybe not just with this budget, but sort of long-term. Looking forward, I think families are providing a lot of school supplies for kids to begin with. And so seeing sort of where that fourth quarter breaks down in terms of what sort of, sort of stationary type supplies are needed and what, where this is like textbooks, speakers for chemistry class and, and things like that. Sort of curricular items would be helpful to me, if you're understand.
I have, I have that. Yeah. Because I, I do a comparison, you know, English department this year to next year, it's an increase once in ways, one more thing we just can just stop. A lot of time to this box. Ready for capitals?
Yeah. Any, any other questions for the committee on budgets before we move to our next part?
I just wanna mention, I love working with you people. This is great. It's very healthy. We're gonna get through this.
That's right.
This is good.
Mr. Carr, I appreciate your optimism. Between you and Mr. Keeney, it's always a sunny day, I have to tell you. So.
Create a tranquil place.
That's just great, because I'm sitting next to Captain Raincloud. So.
I'm just looking at the black and white facts.
This is a very healthy extra fact.
So let's move on, Ms. Owen. Let's talk some, some capital.
If you'd like to do that, sure, we can, we, when she comes back, sure, I'll let her.
I should have thought about that earlier, but.
You know, I should have too. I'm, I'm new in this spot.
I was gonna.
I'd never. I'm not gonna let Ms. Owen go.
We try, we try.
Once in a while.
Yeah.
Okay, capital request. Hopefully, this is the happiest moment. Usually, FY25 school capital request. Use your brief, you know, what the process is, you know, do a walkthrough, we can open our list. I'll try to be quick.
And then, again, we can take this presentation as read, so we can just focus on the items for.
Here are the links. Here are the items.
There we are.
Right, there you are. So you can see, this is the draft, it's draft. It goes through the, the top half in green, have a lot of C-NX to it, it's how I identify regular capital and what we're looking for. A lot of them are repetitive, just lease renewals, replacement of Chromebooks, our, our technology, you know, 10-year, five-year projection, looking to replace the projectors at the high school, there's 46 of them. Last year, we did the middle school. Dear Hill, continue to, I think this is the last year of the three years, to replenish our furniture by grade level. The principal, Sullivan, actually asked for 100 Chromebooks for grade three, because currently they don't have them, they share. And then there was a request for middle, high school indoor signage for classrooms and hallways. And then two new athletic van, 15 passenger vans, an alumni fence replacement and alumni bleachers. So the total capital asked was $8, 844,455. I've got quotes, you see the cues, I have quotes on almost everything of the signage. And then down below, you can see what we identified as stabilization, split stabilization fund. So the first thing that came out of facilities, which was on our, a large list, was the fire alarm, fire alarm system at the old high school. We need to do the engineering study first. Sorry.
Engineering study.
We, we need to do the engineering study. I don't know which one. For $175,000, sorry. Osgood roof, we are applying for accelerated program. Either way, we're looking to put about approximately 200,000 bills aside, because we're gonna have to come up with some of the funding anyways. And if we don't get into the program next year again, we'll probably a lot upside another amount of money. So we finally build up to the cost of the roof in Osgood or until we get into the accelerated program. Finishing the retailing of classrooms and hallways at Dear Hill. It's been piecemeal. So last year, we didn't, this year, currently, we didn't do any. Last year, we did a portion, we before we did a portion. Facilities recommended, put it here on stabilization, because there's maintenance of the building, and let's just finish the school and be done with the floor. And then the rest of it, other than the generator at Osgood, was added to the list, because, you know, had the unfortunate, unfortunate reality of we were in school when we lost power and that was a terrible, terrible time.
Yeah, it was a safety issue.
It was a safety issue. The classrooms were dark. I mean, we've talked about, we have backup generators for when we lose power and we don't have school. But the kids, students were actually in school when it happened. And it was, was dark, it was scary. So definitely we need a generator that can power the school in case it ever happens again when their students are in the middle of the day.
Right, like the other three, the other two schools.
And then we've had lots of requests for the last four or five years and probably longer than that, to fix our sidewalks and asphalt driveways between Dear Hill and Osgood, asphalt road here at Pond Street, side of the curb here, here at Pond Street, extending the sidewalk to Pond Street. And I know, spoke to the DPW, they're, they, they're sticking a quote to do it as a kind of a package. While we have T L Edwards or whatever vendor is in the town doing all the work. We're talking about packaging, packaging it all together and spending the remainder of the stabilization fund on getting all of that paving and asphalting fixed.
Great. And this is, this, this should be familiar to members of the committee, and it's a subject of the ACP workshop. Any questions or comments from committee representatives? There's detailed explanations up in the back, lots of pictures, and I appreciate the presentation, but given the, given the hour.
I would just, I would just, thank you. I would just ask for the alumni fence and the alumni bleachers to add in a it's, it's kind of like each town has them, where we can put storage, like little garages. Mr. Steve Retundy, Mr. Retundy's been asking for this for years now. I would ask that if we could kind of put that in the middle of the bleachers and the fence, if we could kind of, I don't know how important the bleachers are, to be honest with you, as far as like the, the fencing is a security issue, as Dr. Sullivan has mentioned numerous times. I think that's important. I think the bleachers is, is more of a second thought, other than like we're not able to really store our stuff. Exactly. I think we've talked about this, like, so to have, I would ask that Sue and I, maybe we can talk, one of the facilities committee has asked Mr. Retundy to come in and talk about that, try to put that in between the fence and bleachers, if we could.
Thank you, Mr. Keeney. Any other comments? I guess my, my only comment is that, given what we were talking about, budget and where we can project the town will be, I don't think it's, we should harbor hope that we're going to get an allocation of $844,000 capital. I think this list represents a reasonable reflection of priorities. The alumni fence and bleachers, just from my personal perspective, not a priority. The adding Chromebooks, I think, is an educational tool. That's important. Signage is one that's probably not going to, probably not going to get there. There are some that are non-negotiable, the bus lease, the electric bus lease, those are things we have to do by contract and by getting kids to school. Same with Chromebooks, that's an educational tool we need. Projectors, I think, is a huge advantage for our educators. So we definitely want that. But I think once we get past that kind of fourth agenda item, that fourth line, I, I wonder if the town's gonna have the capacity to, to fund. So I think we should think about that as we're, as we're looking at these things.
And that's kind of how we prioritized it with finding.
But we have not, if I recall, I don't, maybe you did it at the workshop, I wasn't there, we've not officially prioritized these yet as a committee, as we're often do. That's.
As a school committee.
And we're not gonna do that tonight, but that is something we will have to do at some point, correct?
Yeah, I think, just to, just to your point about the signage, I think that's really important. No one knows where any, every, you just go to any.
I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I think it's very important, and just in the context of where we are and the resources we have, that's when I would give up sooner than I give up.
Yeah, well, it, it's kind of embarrassing when you, you don't even know who the auditorium is. Like, I'm, I'm gonna be honest. It's, it could be lowered. It just, we need signage just to see where things are. And I, 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 I'll tell you, that's probably echoed through the whole building. Parents come here and I didn't know the auditorium was there. They know, it's just basically, it hasn't been done in so many years. I don't think that's, I, I think that's what we asked for the stabilization fund.
I don't, well, that's, that's a, that's a different discussion. Mr. Carr?
I, I'll double check, but I think recreation is one of the approved items for community preservation. We might, why don't we see, and I'm glad to do it, have a conversation with them about the fence and the bleachers and see if they have any capacity, because we haven't asked for.
The application process, I, I have connection, I used to have connection with KSO.
Oh.
Now the connection on the CPC.
Oh.
And their application process should be opening, they're revamping the application. So.
Terrific.
I do think this is a, the online field is.
Recreation, I think, should be in everybody's best interest to fix that.
Yep. That is, that is a good suggestion, Mr. Carr.
Take a couple of those things off the table. And not get them up. I don't think they do the van, you know, and stuff like that, but stuff like, you know.
Well, and the van isn't ongoing, because it's a lease, but the, and the, the size of that request is within line of CPC availability. So.
Sport equipment is so progressive, I bet there's bleachers to be had in the storage industry. We're gonna be able to procure them.
I'm not sure with CPC, but I know they, they would only, they wouldn't cover either the track or the truck.
Okay.
Because it didn't follow the guidelines. They covered one, but not the other. And I don't recall.
Well, maybe they'll cover the bleachers and not the fence. So, but, but we, we should, we should explore that and I'll take that on. So.
I'll, I'll look into, I'll just figure out what, what's allowed and I'll report back next week. Yeah.
Any other questions, comments on the budget, Ms. Owen? What's our posture here? Not, no vote is requested, I guess, with the next steps on both budget and capital process?
Well, budget is ongoing, as you know, at our next leadership meeting. We'll obviously be having a discussion about the band list.
That idealist. Yeah. No one wants to do it sometimes.
You know, bring that number down. I'll hold through him thousands aside, take it out of the, so we have a better idea of what national percentage is. And then at the next school, we may have to bring, bring it back.
And what's the, from the, from the posture of the total budget process, what's the next step? Presentation, the select board, I guess, I, I never remember.
So the next step would be.
Do you have the timeline?
Well, I know typically last year, at this point, we would schedule the public hearing for like March 13th, I believe. I'm still advertising, it has to be paper in the next week or so. But again, you know, I was waiting on that to have a bigger conversation at the administrative level.
Okay. So you'll come back to us at the next meeting and then, then we'll look at it, setting up the public hearing and moving forward the process.
Because it's also, I think the next, the next school committee meeting, I believe, is gonna be the Metco, it will be in Boston.
Next one.
But you're still wish, yeah, the, the next. Because we also, that'll be the 20. Senator O'Connor is the 28th.
Yes, they're coming soon. Joan, yes.
When is Joan coming?
We haven't scheduled them. It's usually at the next meeting, but we're gonna be in Boston.
Yeah, we'll be at the Metco building after that.
We'll have them come to our budget approval meeting.
Yeah. The public hearing for now, that.
Any other questions on our, Owen, or any other questions on budget capital? Hearing none. I'll move on to food and service, the last element of the budget resource governance. Any, we've heard some great comments on our chef repeatedly for the past, like, you know, three months. So this has been a, this has been a great victory. So that's good. But any updates on food service?
I still think Craig and I are gonna do the elementary, because I, I, I'm hearing from the middle school, because when I get to there, I do wanna get from the elementary. Because I think that's been the hottest challenge. Craig, have you heard anything for the elementary?
It's a little bit slow. There's been some powerful change, changes at Osgood. It seems like Deer Hills is an issue, but I just assume table this for now. I mean, you and I are on it, because we gotta move on. I, I, I asked just.
So we'll close off that. Reports to school committee, subcommittee liaisons, I'll open the floor to anyone representing the school committees, subcommittees or liaisons for any reports to the full.
Again, I think we talked about the select board, my category, select board, I think is going. I mean, they got a lot of challenges that is playing out in the local community. So alternative energy is having discussions with our folks and I think anything we can do with them to lower energy costs are gonna be important. I think they're very into that as well. And we're, I guess, that's all I have.
All right, we'll close off to block G and go to H. Superintendent, Superintendent Search Committee report. Yes.
Okay.
So, but Ms. Ricklin, I'll turn it over to you as the chair of the Superintendent Search Committee.
Just very quickly, we had our first meeting last night, just an introductory meeting to set some sort of, you know, manage expectations, set schedules. We have to be trained by mask, master specific school committees. That's gonna be happening on February 14th. And, or 14th. So applications are due on February 24th. That posting's been live for about two weeks. Ms. Leskey's working on the website, webpage. And sort of where, where, where we're at. So next committee meeting for the, the Superintendent Search Committee will be on February 27th at 6:00 PM. twenty-seventh, uh, at six P M. Um, that will be a closed session because we'll be, we'll, we'll have, um, applications at that point. Um, and then between now and then, we'll be getting trained on how to, you know, evaluate, uh, the evaluation criteria for selecting candidates and so forth. And then we'll be scheduling interviews and, uh, and public forums throughout March, uh, early March. Um, maybe even late February, but probably early March in terms of, you know, building specific, uh, staff forums, student forums, family forums, uh, to get, to gain insight and perspective in addition to the survey that we sent out.
And we're going to resend, right, we're going to send, going to resend that, that'll go out tomorrow.
Yep.
Um, it's been in the newsletter, but, um, we talked about that, so.
Friends and student survey too. Uh, Prince Scott's working on sort of whittling down that, that parent survey that we sent out, so we'll send that out soon too. Uh, that's, that's it. Trying to streamline this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, we do have one topic not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Uh, I'd like to welcome, uh, the chair of our, uh, the, uh, school facilities committee to the, uh, to the forum. He, uh, has graciously waded through our bunch of deliberations. Um, and, uh, informed me, I think it was yesterday or sometime within the past forty-eight hours of a, of a, a need, desire to come talk to us on a relatively expedited basis relating to the, uh, ex, the, um, roof accelerator program.
Yes, accelerator fair by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. Um, they opened it up again this year. Uh, it's going to be a two-year cycle, which kind of lines up good for us. Because Osgood's roof just hit twenty-five years old. That's the minimum to apply. Um, Deer Hill in two years will hit twenty-five years, so as long as the funding is there and they open up again, they'll be able to apply. So I need some heavy lifting from this board here, this committee, um, to get this wonderful little packet filled out. I reached out to Nick to, um, fill out some of the, uh, information on here about the building, building envelope, mechanical system, so on and so forth, that they're requesting this. Um, but the main, majority of it needs to be filled out by superintendent of the schools. Um, there's like five questions. Uh, Dr. Sullivan did that for when we were applying for the, um, middle high schools. It's a similar kind of setup. So it's closing fast. I didn't, um, realize that the window was shorter than our previous one. Looks like it's literally the end of February, beginning of March.
Do you have an actual due date?
I couldn't find it on the website. Um, one was the twenty-eighth I found, another one was March first.
So we've gone online, I know. It's been so, so many communications going back and forth. I've gone, I've gone online, um, and opened up the location for the state of interest. Um, and I spoke to Nick about it and I forwarded him a copy.
Yep.
And I forwarded Michelle.
That's what I, yeah.
Because of a lot of backup information that we need. So Nick's got a lot of digging to do, um, on his end for facilities and all the building and stuff. Um, so we are, we're on top of it.
Yep. I spoke with Nick. He does have a, um, gets, I want to get ahead of this. I want to know what the cost is, some sort of budget number. He has a contractor that he uses for when they analyze all the roofs. Um, and the same contract, I think, but they need to do repairs. So I told him, you know, have him come out, take a look, start getting me some numbers. Um, because I know we can get up to forty percent back, but I don't know, it's like a twenty to forty percent range, but I'm just going to say we get twenty percent. I'm a good gloom guy, that's all I say. I see the good stuff. I'm going to say this, we're on the lower end. Um, so that's what I need from this committee is filled out, the usual approvals. I believe we have to go to the select board as well. So the faster we get this done, the faster I can get on their agenda, them to approve it.
Is there a specific school committee approval you need, or is it just administration completing the?
I think it's the.
I think.
It's similar to.
It's the same as, yeah, I think the superintendent.
Yeah.
The school committee chair and then I think select board.
Yeah, school committee chair, superintendents of school need to sign it, and then the chief executive officer, since we don't have a town on, on the select board with that page.
It's a form of vote.
Yeah.
Is there a vote? Okay. And it's due March first.
Yes.
So we don't have, I don't think, I'm guessing we don't have the form of vote in front of, do you have the form of vote?
I do not. Okay.
Um, can we, would it be all right for you if we have that vote at our next meeting? Would that work on time?
Yep. As long as this is, I just wanted to get it on everyone's radar and make sure the paper is going around, getting filled out, so that votes just need to happen and then we.
Perfect. So we will, um, we'll make sure that that specific resolution is in our committee agenda for next meeting. And, um, I think I speak for the committee, we have our full support to and for the administration to, you know, with whatever forms you need to keep a roof on our kids' heads.
Yes, and to piggyback on that, I did, uh, meet with the alternative energy committee, uh, about preparing the roof for solar. Because since it's a flat roof, it needs to have extra structural things in there so that they can put the array on the building. Um, so I'm working with them to get all that stuff, uh, works. Um, we're talking about solar arrays and I saw you, you think for generator, but talking about battery backup. All this can be funded by the state. So, yeah, I know the power outage stunk, but maybe we just table that two hundred thousand dollar generator for maybe we can't get the solar on.
What would, um?
We can do the fence.
And that's, yeah, that's the other thing I wanted to bring up. I don't know how much that roof is going to cost, but my assumption is going to eat up all of that one point five million dollars. So that's enough, at least, at least. So this may be one of those instances where we roll over into the next year.
From the, from the planning perspective, I think we're planning, it's on the materials, I think we're planning and assuming that the, the total cost of it would be three, four million. Uh, now that's not, that's assuming we do not, doom and gloom, you're not going to get the, um, MSB accelerated program, so those numbers in projection could change, but that's the current, current plan. So, uh, and then obviously if there's state funding that allows us to offset construction and, and replacement cost through solar, all of that. So definitely appreciate what you're doing.
Uh, the solar aspect of it is not so much for the roof replacement, it's for the solar itself.
Is there, um, I don't know.
Because there is a solar green program that they're rolling out that would help fund, but it's not going to be able to, my assumptions. They talked about that like twenty-five, so it couldn't really get that money for Osgood. We may be able to help some.
Unless we, you know, we, that, and this.
I think it's being more on that.
Yeah, and this might be in the realm of your committee, but, you know, there's, I know that there's some talk about how much we can stretch what we have with the existing Osgood and Deer Hill roofs. Um, so maybe it makes sense strategically to target a twenty-five that program's available, but, um, anyway, if we can get the accelerator program, bird in the hat, so.
Is there a reason why we're not asking for a high school?
Yes. There is. Uh, the reason is that, um, we are in conjunction with the accelerator program also applying for the MSBA full program. And we were told by a recent NSBA, by the NSBA, when they visited our facilities, that if you do not want to be in both programs, so you apply for, at their recommendation, you apply for the middle high school for the full building assessment program and not the accelerated repair program.
I see that. I remember that puts us.
Because, well.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Portions of it, but when they look at the local, when you last touched it.
That's fine.
It's not quite, it's not twenty-five.
When are we thinking that?
Eight years. Eight, ten?
Eight to ten. So it would be more of a repair it ourselves if something goes.
Or if there was an accelerator program open in eight years.
Right. Okay. Okay. Because I'm, I'm just concerned like if we don't get, because we just, my, my thing is, you know, again, it's been three years and we talk about getting a new middle high school, but it just doesn't seem to move anywhere. And that's all we're thinking that we're all going to get that, then our schools are just going to just.
I mean, we're looking at, we're looking at everything and the two things that I know that we can do are the roofs for Osgood and Deer Hill with assistance here, or even if we don't get it, we will have with the stabilization fund to take care of it.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Kenny, I do want to, I just want to respond to that because you brought up a couple of times. We are not collecting the middle high school. You actually see a hundred seventy-five thousand dollar investment in the fire alarm system, uh, from our stabilization fund. That's middle high school spend. Um, we are looking at what we, the feasibility study that, uh, we are performing is going to take a look at the middle high school, find the critical systems that we need to invest in to keep this building up to code. So there's no desire, I think, on any one of this committee to let this building fall.
No, I, I, and I'm not saying that, I'm not suggesting that. However, I do see the same thing, like there's no air conditioning in the gym. People ask me for five years now, I don't even know what to say. Like, I sat on a committee, we got a half a million dollars, I don't even know where that money is. We have a hot school. Um, my kids are out of here in two years. Like, and I, and I appreciate my kids are going to great colleges because of everybody in this room, and I'm thankful for you and everybody here for them. Going in the future, I'd just like to see the kids, your kids, your grade kids, have something to have. Because if, if we continue in this path, they're never going to have air conditioning in their school. Like, it's just, to me, it's kind of like, okay, we're all waiting for this. We don't know if it's going to happen. We just spent four hundred thousand dollars to figure out what we're going to do. That could have been applied to teachers' salaries. It just seems like we're just not all, everybody's not on the same page when it comes to this. And, and like, I, I feel like the community doesn't know, there's no leadership here. There's no leadership. And, and it's nobody's fault. It's just that, it's just, just goes round and round and round. Like, are, are we going to get this school? So, okay, we get the school system comes out and they say, okay, we're going to build you a two hundred million dollar high school. We can't even build a, a town hall. We're getting condemned at the town hall. I just don't want to see the same process happen to your kids. Because it's not going to happen to my kids. I got two years left here. However, the kids in the elementary schools right now, your children that I'm talking about, your kids, if you guys don't have a plan for them, they're going to be in the same situation eight years from now. And, and, and.
Appreciate that. That's quite clearly why we're here, Mr. Rose.
No, I get that, but there's still no plan to fix the A C. Okay, there's still not plans to fix the fence. This, it's just, we can afford it. Let's be honest with people. Do you think, I think we should just give us the number of a hundred and sixty million dollars spread over twenty years? Is there an appetite for that right now? If there's not, then we should be talking about renovation of the schools that we have and we should be bonding these things. We should be bonding the A C. We can build, we can build a, a field out there for a million dollars, but we can't have our kids sit in a comfortable room. That's all I'm saying. This is that, this should be a plan A, which would be great, and, but this should be a plan B, and there's no plan B. Right now, it's, we're going to keep spending money to tell everybody that we need a new high school. And if it doesn't happen, and, and, and again, it's been three years, my kids have been the same way. I just don't want to see it happen to the kids that are in the middle of school now. I don't want to see the trailers. I don't want to see it. I, I want, I want, I, we need a plan. And we don't have a five-year plan when it comes to these buildings. I think we do a great job, a five-year plan about where our school does, compass on the school, student, student initiative, all that is internal. That's awesome. That is awesome. The facilities themselves have no plan. We have no facilities director and we have no plan.
Mr. Kenny, what I'll do is, I'll, I'll slide that into a future agenda item topic. Uh, I, I think we part ways there. I think we do have a plan. I think we've been talking about it for a number of years, even at this committee. Um, and so I think our path is pretty sketched out, but I think, you know, if we're not all on the same page, that is there, it's worth, worth going over again. So, uh, do appreciate your comments. Um, I'm going to close off that unless, Mr. Rose, anything else for you? And once again, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no, I just, I'll reiterate what you said. There is a plan. I have a list. It's a laundry list of things that need to get done. My committee voted on a priority list. You guys voted on a priority list. And all I can do is take that one point five million and check off the priority list, however long it takes.
Tim, do you be up to having a meeting?
Of course. Okay. I was going to say, actually, if you need help on, on the exercise potentially around cuts, we'd be glad to. I'm here until the sixteenth, so if you need us, we're available.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Um, we do have a, uh, agenda on approval minutes. Uh, at our last meeting, we tabled the discussion of minutes.
If, if people have edits that they want, if you want to send them to me, if not, I'm glad to move all these minutes and we just move them off our list.
Yep, and the minutes are specifically.
Eleven, one, eleven, oh, sorry, eleven, one, eleven, fifteen, twelve, six, twelve, twenty, and one, ten.
Any comment on discussion on minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
It's, it'll be approved in minutes, so.
By the, by the car, second of Mr. Kenny, all in favor?
Aye.
Close.
I abstained because one of the meetings I wasn't.
Oh.
Which we, so if we're doing it in a group, eleven fifteen, and, and actually I was the only one. It was, uh, myself and Ted. Oops, excuse me, Mr. Carr.
What do you know? Should we vote them all?
We can do all of them except for that one and then.
Yes, let's do.
Okay, let's do that. All right. So these are minutes eleven, one, eleven, twelve, six, twelve, twenty, one, ten. Someone move.
So move, motion made by Mr. Kenny. Just made by, I have a second of my, this call, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, motion carries. And then the remaining minutes is eleven fifteen. Motion to approve?
Someone.
Motion made by Mr. Kenny. I think maybe, um, it's less give a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opinions, uh, dose, and then, uh, any, um, opposed, motion carries, read, uh, with two opinions, uh, from Ms. Recal and Ms. Carr. All right, that closes off minutes.
Sent to Mr. Carr.
Future agenda items, we'll, we'll, we, we have a few. We'll talk about facilities. Um, we're going to also make sure we have a, uh, CPC, uh, uh, CPAC, um, membership, uh, we'll continue on budget. Uh, our next meeting is in Boston, uh, at the Metco headquarters. Uh, we have a great spot, my own money planning plan for our Metco students. And so not only does it give us the opportunity to, uh, visit the Metco headquarters, but also, uh, allow our students to present to us in an appropriate, reasonable proximity to their home. So, um, that's a, uh, a, a very thing I'm excited for. Uh, there is no reason to, uh, move it to executive session.
Can I ask one thing about just that? Um, I think it might be good at a time convenient for you all is that we might consider an executive session on collective bargaining contracts. I think those are appropriate, um, exemptions to the rule.
They are.
So it would be probably good for us to have that discussion under executive session sooner rather than later.
So we will put that as a future agenda. As our contract, if you're thinking what I'm thinking, our contract is coming up for renewal next year.
Maybe we can start the summer, so. Um, who's, who the collective bargaining?
I think we'll have, we'll be reworked by then.
Oh, right. So.
Um, so with that, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion made by Ms. Recal. Got a second? Please have a second, Mr. Kenny, Mr. Kenny. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, the regular meeting, the class school committee is hereby adjourned. Thank you very much for all your participation.